Ladies and gentlemen, I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and successor agency to the redevelopment agency and housing authority meeting of Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. Please join me in standing for the National Anthem. Tonight, we will play a video of Catherine Gutierrez from our graphic design team singing the National Anthem. Then please remain standing while we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fire? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Give proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Pledge of Allegiance, Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, 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 begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all. Thank you. Okay, now is the time for our moment of solemn expression, and we're happy to have Reverend John Began to lead us in our prayer. Reverend.
Father, we ask that you be with our first responders, with our police department, our fire department, our city workers who respond to emergencies during this type of weather. Help keep them in our city safe, protect them and watch over them, and especially their families as well. I want to thank you for the love and the grace that you show each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to bless this amazing city, Costa Mesa. Watch over our leaders, the Mayor John Stevenson, our city manager Loriann, our city council members and their families. May they look at serving for the best, with the best intentions and integrity. We have an amazing body of people who serve this city, and I want to thank you for placing them here. We seek to do your will to be leaders that lead with love and grace and wisdom. I especially want to pray for those that we serve who are experiencing homelessness as they come from a place of brokenness. Protect them from the cold and the rain tonight. I thank you for the shelter that the city was wise and had a heart to place 70 people to get out of the elements but to get into housing. Thank you for the 278 that have been housed so far since we opened the shelter where they had no place to go but on our streets. And we know you have many more intended to be housed. Father, I pray that as a city, and not just the elected officials, but as business owners, workers in this city, homeowners and renters, our children, and each and every one of us will be a people that will always seek the higher good for one another. May we seek you in everything that we do. It is in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Began. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Here.
Councilmember Gamaros.
Here.
Councilmember Marr.
Here.
Mayor Protem Harland.
Here.
Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
City Attorney Barlow, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no action taken in closed session, so nothing to report.
All right, thank you very much. Well, we have a fun evening of three presentations. The first is for the Pacifica Christian State Finals team, and they're from Newport Beach, but Costa Mesa adjacent, let's just say. Two blocks away from Costa Mesa, right over on Monrovia, so we're really happy to have you here. So I have a few remarks, and then we're going to call the coach, Coach Barakoff, up, and then we'll get to take a big picture. So this team is an incredible team. We're proud to recognize the Pacifica Christian Boys Basketball Team for winning the CIF SoCal Regional Division II Championship against Orange Lutheran High School. And a little bit about that game. On March 7th, the Pacific Christian Titans came out of a timeout with 4.6 seconds remaining and holding a one-point lead. It was then that the Triton sophomore E.J. Spillman blocked the Olu's three-point shot to secure the championship. A few statistics about Pacifica Christian. So they're a school of, it's like Hoosiers, if you guys remember that game, that movie. So they have 279 students that go to Pacific Christian. As I said, they're just south of Costa Mesa on Monrovia, and they played against Olu, which is a Trinity League team that plays against the likes of Moderna, Saint John Bosco, some of the real powers, Santa Margarita, and you beat them, as we just read. Then they went into the, they were in the state finals, the state tournament, and they went from, and everybody's probably sensitized to this now because it's March Madness, but they went from a nine seed all the way to the state championship. Eventually losing to a team, I can't remember the name of it, but it's like the Moderna of Fresno, if you can imagine. They put up a great fight and were great representatives, not only locally, but for all of Southern California, and so we're very pleased to have you in here. Let's see what else is on my script. The impressive win demonstrates the team's hard work and dedication throughout the 2022-2023 basketball season. We commend you on a great season. Let's give a shout out to Costa Mesa residents, brothers and teammates, Owen and Cadel Connell. Their father, Michael Connell, is also one of the assistant coaches. Let's hear it for the Costa Mesa residents. I would also like to take a moment to recognize two players from the team that will be going on to play at the next level. Parker Strauss has committed to a Division I school, Northwestern, who, of course, got knocked out of the tournament by UCLA. But it was great, they won their first game, so that's good. And Tanner Sarge Deal, who has committed to Grinnell College. And so congratulations to the whole team. Now, Coach Barakoff, if you could come up, we've got certificates, you can provide them to all your players, and then we'll take a big group picture. And kind of tell about the team and whatever you want to say.
Yeah, thank you for having us and recognizing such a great group of young men. You know, I'm just so proud of them. They played basketball the right way. If you guys know basketball, we had five guys all average double digits, and our sixth player averaged nine, so basically six guys, and they just epitomized the word "team" all year, sacrificing for each other, and that's why they were so successful. I'd love to see you at a game next year and all you guys up here, and you can see how fun of a group they are and how well they play. And they're the group of guys that, after the end of the game, when there's water bottles left under the benches, they walk down, win or lose, and they pick them up and put them in the trash. And you know, that means I know myself and my assistant coaches, we're doing the right job, is teaching better young men to help, you know, give better to our society. So I'm really proud of them, and thank you for having us, and I'll call these guys up. He's not here. E.J. Isaiah Pashal. Caden Connell. A.J. Tanner Sarge Deal. Logan Stewart. Logan's not here either. Assistant Coach Greg Brown. Assistant Coach Joe Curz. Assistant Coach George Fisher. Assistant Coach and Head Athletic Trainer and Assistant A.D. Assistant Coach, Costa Mesa resident, Michael Connell. Mayor, I think we got through it all there.
All right, let's stay there, we'll all take a picture. Counsel?
It's tripod time.
You guys can all lean down, kneel down.
All right, you're all ready.
All right.
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 Live as a slave to another person's ideology or tyrannical ruling. I am grateful for everybody that showed up today. If you're Persian, can you just like put up a peace sign and show your support? I have been honored to have these Iranians show up to city councils with me. And we are grateful for Costa Mesa to not only support us for Norris, but be one of the very first cities that supported us when you passed a resolution condemning the United States. You guys don't have the one of the, you know, largest Iranian population. But every time I reached out to you, you stood right behind us and you supported our community. And for that, I am grateful to you. Thank you so much. Norris atun perus bo midir azadiy Iran. Grateful to you. Thank you guys so much. Have a wonderful night.
All right. Let's take a, let's take a photo.
Hi, I'm Michael Chegeni. I'm the Iranian-American Community Chair. And we brought some flowers for you. And this is part of our tradition to give flowers because Eastern starts with flowers. And Eastern and Persian, you're actually the same. Celebration of the birth of earth. So what we have here, I'm gonna go around and present it to you. We have, we had Persian dancing outside. You guys missed it. But we have, we kept some of the young children here to show you flowers. We're gonna leave the flowers here because it's hard for us to bring it up there. But we just wanna show you that these are yours.
Okay. And during the picture, we can hold them.
Yes.
We'll hold them during the picture. Okay. Are we ready? Let's take, let's take a picture.
Thank you.
And now, what you've all been waiting for is our Active Transportation Committee presentation. So next is a presentation on Active Transportation, the Active Transportation Committee by the Chair, Ralph Taboda, and the Vice Chair, Bridget Gleason. And so you are in your, in your places. So Chair Taboda, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protim, and Council members, thank you for allowing us to present an annual report for your Act, the Active Transportation Committee. Again, I'm Ralph Taboda, the Chair, and with me is Bridget Gleason, Vice Chair. And I'm not sure who booked us tonight, but we got a tough act to follow here between basketball players and yellow tutus. I don't know. Okay, so let's get started. Again, the committee's eight years, actually, next month will be eight years. The committee was formed back in 2015, and we changed our name a year ago to the Active Transportation Committee. We have 11 members authorized on the committee and two alternates. Right now, we have an open spot which, and for both the alternate and the members, but I'm sure, I know next council meeting appointments are being made, so those will be filled. I want to mention or highlight two members, Brian Estrada and David Martinez. They have not reapplied for, for various reasons, but they've been, Brian has been a four-year member and David Martinez has been a two-year member. And want to thank them for all their efforts over the years, really contributed to the committee. David, you know, and David actually had the idea to change the name from the Bike and Walkability Committee to the Active Transportation Committee, which I think was a great idea. Also, we have liaisons. Councilmember Reynolds, Gamaros, and Protim Harlan. I want to thank them for their efforts over the years. And Dr. Kurt Bauermeister also. He was a longtime liaison between the committee and the school district. And he rotated off about three or four months ago. He got reassigned within the school district, and so he's no longer the liaison, but want to thank him for his efforts. Also, want to thank staff, in particular Raj's team with the Active Transportation, Mr. Seth Raman, Ms. Rosales, and Mr. Thomas, as well as all of, all of city staff. I think the city's made great strides over the past number of years on implementing and supporting Active Transportation. And certainly, the council has been very supportive of Active Transportation, and we appreciate that. The council goals, you can see here, this is on the left side. This is very similar to chart that we presented last year, but the, the goals, overall goals, a safer place to walk, sustainability, approving a pedestrian master plan, and then mitigate collisions. All those still apply. And then within that or under those goals, we have the Active Transportation Plan, which was approved back in mid-2018. They have six primary goals. You see them listed there. And also, the proposed pedestrian master plan also feeds into or aligns with those six goals listed there also. Let's start. The, in January, a couple of months ago, we had to convert, we had a number of subcommittees, and per city attorney's office, we had to basically discontinue those committees, and we formed new, either new ad hoc committees or standing committees. We elected to stand, to form new ad hoc committees. And you can see them there, Open Streets, Economic Growth, Active Transportation, Pedestrian Master Plan, and Education, which kind of mirror the subcommittees that we formerly had, but those are our new ad hoc committees. And as need be, we'll be forming new ad hoc committees during the year. And I'm gonna turn it over to Bridget. She's gonna go through a lot of the activities that we've done the past year.
Hey there. Yeah, so we've been busy, as we should be, and have accomplished a lot of stuff this last year to answer that vision and the goals that we've set. So we'll just go through a couple here. Legislative Watch activity was an effort we had continued from 2021, and it included identifying and supporting state-level bills that would dramatically enhance the safety and efficiency and just overall transportation in the city. And the bills that the ATC supported included AB 1909, the Omni Bike Bill, that David Martinez, our committee member, had a large part in including bike licensing and eliminating that. So he took an issue that he saw in the city and elevated all the way to the state level. So wanted to give him a special shout out. And the other bill that was successfully passed that we supported was AB 2147, the Freedom to Walk Act. Easements and rideaway vacations, not our favorite type of vacations, but usually a good thing for the city. We're involved in reviewing those. Bike racks, also a continued effort over the years here and working with staff on installing those and identifying areas in the city to do that. And also, in cooperation with the city, the Chamber of Commerce, working on a commercial bike rack program and getting those installed at businesses in the city. So one of our favorite activities that we get to do every year is the Walk to School and Bike to School Day. Both of these events were a really great success, and we were lucky to see a strong comeback in 2022 after a couple of years off. So we had 13 schools participate in Walk to School Day, nine schools participate in Bike to School Day, a total of 1,800 students, nine committee members. We had a good number of council members and staff join us for Walk to School Day this year, so it was really great to see them out there. And this is really an event, both of these, that allow us to connect with the community and speak to students and parents on an important issue, which is, you know, safe routes to schools and, you know, getting through the neighborhood safely to get to school, especially with a lot of schools in Costa Mesa where the majority of the students walk to school and bike to school every day. So it's at the high priority for us to, you know, like I said, see these kids to school safely every day. Couple other activities, Concerts in the Park, the Fish Fry, Earth Day. The committee had a booth there promoting Active Transportation in the committee and, like I said, just kind of letting people know how to get around safely in the city on their bike and get into these events that way. Same with this Team Cyclocross event that happens at Belaric in Estancia Park. The committee members were present there too, so always looking for anything that's bike, walk, run-related. And then, we also just have various community bike rides that happen monthly, weekly. Councilmember Reynolds has hosted many community rides monthly, so, and does a very good job of promoting those. So be on the lookout. Hopefully, we'll get a chance when things dry up to, to do that again. Liller Dag Wednesday Night Bike Rides happen out of Lyons Park. And then, some of our members have gone outside the city to Open Streets events and other events to, to borrow ideas and see how we can get those implemented in the city. One of our big efforts last year was the Pedestrian Master Plan, and we worked with the consultant KOA to essentially provide comments, recommendations, and also do walk audits with them. So in support of the report that they finished up in June of 2022. We approved that report, and even though we approved it, we did approve it with a letter to the Planning Commission recommending that their approval is subject to certain provisions, and that includes developing an implementation plan within 12 months of approval. So we can actually see this get done and see it follow a plan. And we also wanted to allow for expanding the PMP to include other sections and areas of the city. A new project, the Wayfinding Bicycle Signage Project is underway, and we have met with the consultant, Ulta Planning, for their first kind of meet and greet to show us what they got going on. There's a picture up there of kind of the concept drawing or concept sign for the bicycle wayfind and signage. So we'll be hopefully getting those installed and, like I said, Economic Growth. They had the challenge of, you know, finding a good way to get Active Transportation and small businesses and local businesses involved here. So they've worked hard to essentially adopt the Bicycle Benefits Program, which is a community-based discount loyalty program. So that will be rolled out through a private citizen initiative. Our subcommittee that's in charge of education and safety training have been hard at work on working with community members, councilmember Reynolds, other organizations, Walk and Rollers to host bike safety events. Couple upcoming events, the Street Beat Festival, which is in conjunction with Walk and Rollers, is May 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Estancia High School. It's gonna be a big event for bicycle and e-bike safety and road skills. There'll be music, food, raffles, and giveaways. And, you know, that, our, our subcommittee has been working really hard on this, and if anybody's putting an event together with multiple, multiple entities, you know how much of a struggle that is. So they've, they've been really crushing it the last couple of months to, to get this going. So we're looking forward to seeing everybody out there on May 27th at Estancia. And then, SOI Save Our Youth is having a bike safety event sponsored by the CNPD on March 25th, so I think that's actually the Saturday. So kind of the same idea, get out there and make sure their bikes are safe and they have all the equipment that they need. And then, the Bright Lights of Costa Mesa event that happened last year, we worked in conjunction with CMABs for a bike light giveaway at certain select intersections of the city. And if anybody needs bike lights, we still have plenty. And that was, that was an excellent program, and we were glad to be able to, to work with them and get out on the streets with CMABs to give those away. And then, just a couple more, the Open Streets Event. We're in the progress of kind of creating informational flyer and questionnaire and kind of finding the right place to host an Open Streets event in the city of Costa Mesa. So we're gonna keep hitting the, hitting the ground on that, and hopefully, we'll, we'll see that event planning get put in place and have one of those events here in the city. And then, like I said, one of our, one of our big things is Active Transportation Project recommendations. So using the ATP and the proposed PMP, the committee coordinated with staff on budget and recommended a list of projects that we would like them to focus on. So we will be formally submitting that list to the city council for you guys' review and approval. Okay, so project progress on active and completed projects. We've been working with the city on, on stuff that you guys have seen happen and be constructed, but a couple that we just want to highlight here, West 19th Street Bicycle Improvements Project, that has been designed and awarded for construction, so we're excited to see that start happening and, like I said, have some safer bike infrastructure on 19th Street. And the same with Placentia Avenue and the Active Transportation Improvements that are gonna happen there too. So also designed and completed and awarded for construction. So the, the committee worked hard on that one and completed walk audits and provided a lot of input during the design phase. So we're excited to see a lot of that stuff that's gonna be implemented down Placentia. And then, West 19th Street and Wallace pedestrian signals, hawk signals at Wilson Park and Fordham, the West 18th Street Hawk Signal at Lyons Park. Those designs have been completed, and we're looking forward to seeing those hawk signals constructed. West Wilson Street Improvements, construction is underway. I believe that, like I said, they've, they've got paving done and striping's about to be completed, but it's, it's looking good. Fairview Road Class Four from Fair Drive to Newport Boulevard, the design is underway on that project, and we're looking forward to seeing the final design on that and giving the staff input on, on what we need to see there. One of the big projects that I think a lot of people have seen and visited, Randolph Avenue Improvements, the construction was completed with parking improvements, pedestrian improvements, roundabouts, and just really making that whole area so much more walkable and welcoming. And it was really kind of a, a beacon for, for the area and what can get done in a fairly quick amount of time. So that's a good one to see and enjoy. And then, let's see, continuing on Newport Boulevard and Industrial Way crosswalk, the construction's complete, and, you know, it, it might be just a crosswalk to some people, but that was a big project to get implemented and an important piece to some safe routes to schools and getting folks from the west side to the schools over in Newport Harbor and in that area. So happy to see that in an area that is, that is needed. Adams Avenue Pine Creek, the design was complete. Adams Avenue Bicycle Improvements, Harvard of Fairview, is also nearing completion. Again, projects that we, you know, gave heavy input to. Baker, Placentia, Victoria, 19th Street Traffic Signal Synchronization, all projects that really, like I said, support the, the safety in crossing these, these pretty large intersections in our city. The Local Road Safety Plan was complete, 15 bike racks were installed over the past year, and Request a Bike Rack webpage is launched with a link, you know, which is a very easy form to fill out, and literally, if you Google "bike racks Costa Mesa," it's the first thing that pops up, so. And then, the Draft Pedestrian Master Plan. So the draft's complete, and we gave lots and lots of input on that and presented to the Planning Commission and the city council. Ralph?
Okay, the, Bridget mentioned the Local Road Safety Plan. That was approved last April. Just some, some highlights, that analyzed five years of collision data in Costa Mesa, 2015 through 19. And number one cause of collisions was unsafe speed. I don't think that probably surprises anybody. Number two was DUIs. And the stats were 287 pedestrian collisions, eight fatal, 38 severe, 306 bicycles, bicycles, bicycle collisions. So you can see a little bit more bicycle collisions, but fortunately, no fatalities and only 17 only, but 17 severe injuries. So more bicycle collisions, but let's say less severe or less certainly fatal accidents from those collisions. Majority of the collisions occurred near or in intersections, and the majority of both pedestrian and bicycle collisions occurred basically on the same roads or the same intersections. Okay, next, next step. So what do we hope to do in the next 12 months? Good news is, as, as Bridget mentioned, we, we reviewed projects for next year with staff, and we, except for two small changes, we appear to have, be aligned in our recommendations that will be coming forward to council, and you'll receive a letter from the committee in April on the listing of those projects. Some of the major ones, again, is the Class Four on Fairview, as Bridget mentioned, in design phase. We're hoping to have construction there sometime next, next, let's say, within the next 12 months. Also, Adams Avenue Class Two, design is done. That's Fairview to Fairview, Harvard to Fairview, and that will tie into the recently completed bike lanes on Fairview between Baker and Adams, and also provides additional safety for OCC students. And then, the Pedestrian Master Plan, there's a number of improvements suggested for 19th Street, and those are also on our recommendation list. The ATP Implementation Plan, I mentioned this at the goal-setting meeting, that I think it would be really helpful for the council staff with the help of the committee to develop an implementation plan for the Active Transportation Plan. Establishes a goal in number of years. One thing that would have to be done is the ATP currently just primarily lists bicycle projects, not pedestrian projects. The PMP, the Pedestrian Master Plan, has the pedestrian, has the pedestrian projects in it. Those projects between bike and walk need to be integrated together. And having an implementation plan, I think, would really advance your desire, council's desire to, with the goal of strengthening public safety and improving the quality of life in here in Costa Mesa. As again mentioned, the best pedestrian master plan, that will probably be coming through or to the Planning Commission sometime in June. Again, we have recommendations there that we would hope that they would approve that. Certainly, we want the PMP approved, but with some conditions that additional, approving or making it allowable for additional sections of the city to be added to the PMP and developing an implementation plan for the PMP. Again, city ordinances, we'd like to do some work, Brenda mentioned, or Bridget mentioned, bike licenses, but there's other efforts or other ordinances that are out of date or that need to be updated in the existing city ordinances. Open Streets, we'll want to conduct our survey, then come back to the council and staff with results, and then where do we go from here? Wayfinding Signage, we will continue to make suggestions to staff and the consultant on locations and destinations for wayfinding signage. Safe Routes to School, again, we can, there's a grant that city received a number of months ago for the 630K. We want to offer some assistance on approving those routes. And then, the one that was just, just received, the Multimodal Safety Improvements, this is an area where I think the, the committee can really help staff. We've got boots on the ground, we've got committee members who obviously live in the city, we're biking and walking on a, on a daily basis practically in the city, so we knew that, we know the areas that need to be improved or that need to be upgraded. And then, we'll, we'll be reviewing eight, the projects approved for next year's budget. Some of those will be going into design phase, and we'll have input there. And I reached out to Chief Lawrence on the 529 Program. That's the bike registration program, and I'll be, be meeting with Roxy Fayed, Officer Roxy Fayed, tomorrow on that. So if the committee can help in some way in rolling out that program, we'd like to do that. Again, some of the issues are challenges. Increased use of e-bikes is putting more, higher demand, to nobody's surprise, on the, the biking infrastructure the city has. The pace of progress, the ATP shows a mode shift, 10% for biking and 20% for walking. Ways to go to meet that goal, and then certainly, the, as one of the council's goals, prioritize and implement projects and programs that contribute to the reduction of collisions and have a zero fatality, severe injury level. And I don't think I'm saying anything that, that staff wouldn't mind, but Mr. Seth Raman has mentioned a number of times, some of the limiting factors on AT projects is, is not necessarily the funding, but staffing levels. So as, as council know, that's an issue. Not just in, not just for Active Transportation, some other areas also in the city.
All right, so to, to wrap this up, we've posted some recommendations and calls to action for our council members here. We would like to prioritize, we'd like you guys to prioritize cyclists, pedestrian safety, and improved connectivity in the CIP projects with emphasis on connectivity.
do that. Again, some of the issues or challenges, increased use of e-bikes is putting more, higher demand, to nobody's surprise, on the biking infrastructure the city has. The pace of progress, the ATP shows a mode shift, 10% for biking and 20% for walking. Ways to go to meet that goal. And then certainly the, as one of the council's goals, prioritize and implement projects and programs that contribute to the reduction of collisions and have a zero fatality severe injury level. And I don't think I'm saying anything that staff wouldn't mind, but Mr. Seth Raman has mentioned a number of times, some of the limiting factors on AT projects is not necessarily the funding, but staffing levels. So as council know, that's an issue. Not just for active transportation, some other areas also in the city.
All right, so to wrap this up, we've posted some recommendations and calls to action for our council members here. We'd like to prioritize, we'd like you guys to prioritize cyclist pedestrian safety and improved connectivity in the CIP projects with emphasis on connectivity. So we want to be smart about building bike lanes and pedestrian infrastructure that connect and really help our citizens and the folks here that enjoy Costa Mesa in getting around on their bike and on their feet. Of course, increased spending and outreach efforts for active transportation projects and programs. And again, always increased spending is probably a recommendation, but the outreach part too is really important here and kind of getting the word out on the infrastructure that we've had and that we've built and that we want to build. So like I said, reach out to your constituents, check in with them on social media. And then provide. So provide funding to work on updated ordinances, accommodate mobility, multimodal, achieve the silver level bike friendly community badge, and eliminate ordinances that encourage inequity. So. And then promote, promote awareness and utilization of active transportation modes and facilities through community outreach, Costa Mesa Minute and social media. So again, just outreach efforts help a ton. And then our final one is ACT. We would love to see our own council members increase their use of active transportation, commit to walking or riding to a small business in your district on a weekly basis and encourage your constituents and neighbors to do the same. Like I said, get out there, ride your bike with your neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, that completes our presentation. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any comments or questions? Are we not on discussion mode? Hold on one second. We're on discussion mode. Oh yeah, I mean, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes, thank you. No questions, just want to comment. I do spend, attend these meetings regularly and want to thank the team for the presentation here and for all of the engagement. And then of course our staff who work so closely with us and with our committee members who've really enabled as a, you know, group effort with council support, enabled a blossoming, right, of active transportation efforts in the city. And we're seeing the fruits of that. It's really exciting to see some of the projects that you shared actually implemented, right, participating in the design actually implemented on the streets. We've seen some great videos of how those projects will help our constituents. I'm looking at our public works director and our transportation staff in the back. Thank you all for your work and thank you to the committee for your work. We, I think the committee's done a really fantastic job working in the community to galvanize support for safe streets and educate our community members. And I think that's helped a lot in some really big wins on the grants that our staff have submitted, really exciting projects. And so I see sort of this turn now where we focused on galvanizing to now implementation of this massive list of projects we have. So I appreciate the presentation. I think it's fantastic for the public to hear all of the wonderful things that the team here is working on. And I'm very proud of it and proud of our committee members and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any council members? Okay. Thank you very much, Chair Toboda and Vice Chair Gleason for that great comprehensive report. Thank you very much.
Thank you again and thank you again for your support of active transportation and also thank you to staff for all the staff's efforts and support of active transportation.
Okay, now's the time, now's the time for public comment. You can come up either within the chambers or on Zoom. Everybody at public comment has two minutes. You could talk about anything that's not on the agenda. If it's a translated public comment, it gets five minutes instead of three. You'll hear a, you'll hear a tone at one minute. You'll hear a tone at one minute and please wrap it up at that point in time and then same on Zoom. So with that, I think we're ready to go. Let's go over here to my left. Ma'am, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening. My name's Amy.
Please, please order, please. Yes.
I'm a, I'm a mom of Costa Mesa and this is my daughter Sage and Hadley and these are my constituents. And we've been fighting to get new playground equipment at Brentwood Park. That's our local neighborhood park. It's, it was acquired in 2007 by the city and only a negligible amount of modifications have been done to it. It's heavily used by toddlers, one of which is right here, and it has no playground equipment for it. It's unsafe for toddlers, it's not gated in any way, there's a lot of open leashes, dogs off leash. And we know that this year a line item was made for Brentwood to get $250,000. We're excited to get to work. However, we've heard that it might be sidelined because of the influx of money from Dave Min and it now might be get pushed down the line again. So we're hoping to get Brentwood Park on the agenda in the SIP schedule for this year, this fiscal year, and to see some action finally taken on it. And these girls have something they'd like to ask too.
Yes.
I've been waiting for a park for a long time and, well, we already have a park, but me and my friends on my neighborhood, we really like this park and we go there a lot and it's the park closest to us and, and I really like swings and they don't have swings. So that's my most thing that I want. Your turn, Hadley.
You know, we need to get some more equipment so then like, because when I was on a vacation, there's like this place, there's eight-year-olds like at a park. So, you know, you need some more equipment. Mommy, can I say something else?
Yeah, you have more time.
And, oh.
You have, you have more time.
Um, there's this old volleyball field that mostly no one uses and my sister and some other toddlers has kind of been hanging on it and I'm afraid it's going to break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's a tough, that's a tough act to follow, but you have, you have the floor.
It certainly is and I apologize for the-
Order, please, order, please.
I apologize for the graphic image. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is TJ Kelly. I'm a Costa Mesa resident in District Two and I'm a volunteer at Priceless Pet Rescue in Costa Mesa. I'm here tonight to discuss the email that I sent to the city council recently regarding the image that you see before you. This is an infected spay wound on a cat that I discovered during my volunteer shift at Priceless Pet Rescue on Saturday, March 11th. I do not claim to be a veterinarian, nor do I have any formal medical training, but I think that everyone in this room can see that this is a very disturbing infection in a defenseless animal, an animal that deserves better than this, a lot better than this. This spay surgery was performed at Newport Center Animal Hospital, which is the hospital that is contracted with the city of Costa Mesa and paid for with taxpayer dollars. Apparently, this spay infection is not an isolated incident, but rather something that occurs quite often in animals that are spayed at Newport Center Animal Hospital. Chronic spay infections and other complaints have repeatedly been brought to the city council's attention over the past four-plus years, yet Newport Center Animal Hospital continues to have their contract with the city of Costa Mesa renewed. As taxpayers and animal advocates, we should be providing the best possible care for animals in the city of Costa Mesa. I'm here tonight to ask that Newport Center Animal Hospital be audited by an independent third party and that those findings be disclosed to the public before Newport Center Animal Hospital's contract is able to be renewed by the city of Costa Mesa again. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. First, I want to thank the city again for the hearing implementation for people with hearing disability. It gives us the opportunity to participate more fully with the city and I thank you for making sure that service is available to the residents of Costa Mesa. Secondarily, we had a nice presentation tonight for academic, pardon me, for athletic achievement. And I, and I'm, I'm fine with all those, I think they're fine. What I would like and I'd ask the city council to do is find ways to give the same kind of recognition to academic achievement. The room right now is full of students from local schools looking at civics in the community. It would be a nice thing for those students to also see that they're getting recognition for achievement, not necessarily on the field, but in the field of what they're striving to become. So I would like to see that happen in the future if you could. Secondarily, I would also like to ask the Active Transportation Committee to put in its agenda specifically electric bikes. I came out of my dealership having car repaired yesterday and as I came to a stop on Harbor Boulevard, a kid doing about 30 miles an hour jumped directly off the curb without even pausing, nothing, going like a bat. If I had not stopped, one more of those accidents they were talking about would have happened. If I had for any reason not stopped, that kid would be, would be not with us today. And it's only because they've got the capacity now with those kind of bikes to give them the speed above and beyond what they can normally do on regular bike. I would just like to see them look at that and follow it. And lastly, Major K passed back in November and for at least a year, if not two years before that, I heard comments about active, about the inclusionary housing ordinance. And of course, we've been told we're going to have one sometime this year. Of course, we were told we're going to have one some other times before that. And I would like to see some public processing, making sure that the inclusionary housing ordinance is in fact moved forward and we can start seeing activity on it in the staff reports and what have you. So looking forward to seeing the inclusionary housing report, inclusionary housing ordinance, pardon me, move forward and move forward this council after all. Major K requires that to be doing what it's going to do to have that ordinance in place. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, you have the floor.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. I'm glad to meet you everyone. Mi nombre es Libert Moreno. I'm in Libert Moreno.
Tenésco al Distrito Cuatro.
I belong to District Four.
Estoy aquí para poder pedirles ayuda para todas las que tenemos una renta muy excesiva.
I am here to ask every one of you to, to let you know that we have excessive amount of rent in our area.
So nuestras viviendas no tienen las cosas necesarias para poder estar nosotros bien.
Our housing does not have the necessary implements for us to have a good life.
Hay mucha inseguridad en nuestra comunidad.
There's a lot of insecurities around in our community.
Los automóviles pasan a una velocidad excesiva.
The automobiles go around our area in a very excessive speed.
Estuve a punto de tener un desalojo injustificado, sin ninguna, solo desalojar y ya.
I was close to just being thrown out of my housing for no reason at all.
La banqueta de mi apartamento está toda rota, no la quiere arreglar el arrendatario.
The sidewalk in my apartment is completely broken up and the landlord does not want to fix it.
Su excusa es decir, si no le gusta puede salirse y total es fácil salir y no pague me.
So the actual excuse is, well, if you're not happy, you can leave and just pay me.
Y todos tenemos derecho a una vivienda justa. No importa, perdón.
We all have the right to having a good place to live with a just amount of rent.
No importa cuál sea nuestro estado migratorio, estamos pagando nuestros derechos también.
It doesn't really matter what our legal status is. We just have the same rights as everyone else about paying rent.
Y pagamos nuestros impuestos también.
We also pay our taxes.
Tenemos derecho a viviendas justas.
We have rights to live in a safe environment.
Y a respeto también.
And to be respected as well.
Y un lugar seguro para vivir y unas calles seguras para transitar.
It's in a safe place to live and safe streets so we can go on and be safe in the roads.
Merecemos respetos y derechos también.
We deserve respect and rights as well.
Para nuestra familia y para nuestros hijos también.
For our families and our children as well.
Esperemos que nuestras propuestas sean escuchadas y atendidas por todos ustedes y nos tomen en cuenta.
We hope that all that we're asking is taken into account by each one of you and that you reply to our needs.
Y también estamos aquí para poder, si necesitan que nosotros también pongamos de nuestra parte, para eso estamos, para apoyarnos todos en proponer qué podemos hacer para no tener esa inseguridad en nuestro distrito.
So we are here to let you know that we can help you, we can work together, not just you, not just us, but in combination and get to the point where we live in a safe environment and we live with dignity.
No podemos caminar en nuestra comunidad ya muy tarde porque tenemos miedo con los pandilleros, a veces hasta con la misma autoridad, tenemos miedo de acercarnos y pedir ayuda.
So actually, when, we are afraid, we are scared to go out on the streets when it gets too dark. Not only are we afraid of gangs, we're also afraid of the authorities because we are afraid if we approach them, you know, it's not necessarily being heard.
Sobre todo con los muchachos, con los automóviles, los arrancones, los asaltos en nuestra comunidad.
Especially with the youth, with them driving fast and also being assaulted.
Esperemos que nos puedan ayudar y apoyar y también estamos para ayudar y apoyar.
So we hope that you can help us and support us and we are here to help you and support you as well.
Muchas gracias por su atención y por escuchar.
Thank you very much for your attention and for listening to us.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a short presentation for Fentanyl Solution that was sent over. Do you guys have that? Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. Now, do I progress this or do you? Which is right in the blue? I could just say next slide. Okay, all right, that's fine. Well, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Janice M. Celeste. I'm the president and CEO of FentanylSolution.org and I'm here today to lend our organization's support in the fentanyl crisis. I want you to know about us. We just were established in January in Newport Beach. However, I'm a resident of Costa Mesa, so I wanted to come here and tell you all about us. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. You can go to the next slide. And you can go to the next slide. Our organization's mission is to deliver comprehensive education, powerful advocacy, unwavering community support, and impartial, nonpartisan policies that will eradicate, elicit fentanyl deaths in the United States. Although we're based in Orange County, we plan to grow our reach from here, but we're starting right here at home first. Next slide, please. Thank you. As you all know from dealing with this and hearing about it in the news, talking about it in council, fentanyl is instantly addictive and is being peddled to kids on social media sites. Twenty children in Orange County died in 2021 and they were all overdoses, which we call poisoning, because they don't know that they're taking fentanyl. They think they're getting a Percocet and it could be the first time they tried it. And it has a deadly amount of fentanyl and they die. So we don't want this to happen to any other children or any other adults. It's the leading cause of death for adults 18 to 45 in the country. Notably, Snapchat, kids are getting this off of the internet and getting it delivered by DoorDash. And you have to have money to be able to do that. These aren't addicts. These are adults and children who are trying or trying to get medicine and it's not what they think it is. Because I have a short time to speak today, I'm only going to address how this drug is affecting children. And there are a few other demographics that are being affected as well. And I mentioned to you about the 18 to 45-year-olds. You can go to the next slide. Okay. So these are just some demographics from the DEA, CDC, just kind of show you where we are with fentanyl. Okay? You can go to the next slide. About our organization in Newport Beach, we- About our organization in Newport Beach, we currently on board, we have a politician you might know as our chairman is Pat Bates, and she's a retired senator. We have parents who have lost their children to fentanyl from Orange County, and we have added other members. We're also looking for more board members, so if anyone's interested. I am, you can go to the next slide. I am open to meeting with anyone here, Police Department, City Council, to try to be a partner in this epidemic. Next slide, please. All right. So yeah, let's collaborate on any upcoming projects that you may have. Please keep us top of mind. That's what I asked today. All right, next slide. And our website is our name. I have business cards for all of you, and I can...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, whoever's next on this podium has the floor.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Juan Atrejo.
My name is Juan Atrejo.
Y vengo a darle las gracias.
And I come to say thank you.
Porque sé que están organizando entrenamientos.
Because I know you're organizing training.
Para que sepamos cuáles son nuestros derechos como inquilinos.
So that we know what our rights are as tenants.
Mi única preocupación sería...
I only worry, will be.
Si van a ser que esos derechos que hay de inquilinos se cumplan.
That these rights that the tenants have will be actually complied with.
Sé que algunos de ustedes, su prioridad es que haya menos homeless.
I know that your priority now is homelessness.
Pero mi pregunta es qué están haciendo para evitar que más personas se queden sin hogar.
But my question is, what are you doing to prevent more people to turn into homeless?
Por los altos costos que estamos viviendo en las comunidades.
For the high cost of rent that we're living in our communities.
Excuse me for... For the last speaker, we had two microphones. Do we still have the two microphones?
Yes.
Because if one of you will use one and one of you use the other, then the voices will be picked up better.
Another one, please.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, good stuff. Please resume. Thanks.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Sé que algunos de ustedes quizás no sea agradable que vengamos a compartir parte de lo que vivimos.
I know that it must not be pleasant for some of you that we come and share what we live every day.
Pero yo creo que menos les gustaría vivir lo que nosotros estamos viviendo en los distritos que ustedes representan.
But I know that you would not like to live what we live in the districts that you represent.
Vengo a volverles a hacer la invitación.
I come again to bring an invitation to each one of you.
De que vengan a caminar con nosotros.
That you come and walk with us.
Para que ustedes conozcan.
So you know.
El distrito que ustedes representan.
The district that you represent.
Porque es poco lo que yo les puedo decir.
Because it's very little that I can tell you.
Ustedes necesitan ver.
You need to see.
En las condiciones en las que se encuentran las viviendas.
The condition in which the dwellings are in.
Sé que puede ser cansado para ustedes.
I know that it might be tiring for you.
Y para nosotros también.
And for us as well.
Y más cuando vemos que nuestros testimonios no tienen respuesta para atrás.
And more so when we see that our testimonials don't have an answer back from you.
Aunque ustedes no lo crean.
Even though you don't believe it.
Nosotros también merecemos.
We also deserve.
Que nuestra gente viva con dignidad humana.
That our people live with human dignity.
Tenemos gente que ahorita no sabemos si llueve más afuera o adentro porque se les metió todo el agua para dentro.
Right now, we have people that we don't know if it's raining hard or outside or inside a dwelling because the houses are just...
Han hablado a los dueños y no hemos obtenido respuestas de los dueños de esas viviendas.
We have called the owners of those dwellings, and we have not received any response from them at all.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Well, first of all, I would like to answer the most important question. Yes, I did ride my e-bike to get here tonight in the rain. But I would like to thank the council for the start of Project Home Key, the conversion for the Motel 6 into housing for veterans and seniors. But I would also like you to be aware, they will be funding for a third round of Home Key, Project Home Key. And I hope that you all have plans with whatever partners are trying, would like to bring another project to a motel conversion. To keep that in your mind and support them in doing that. We need more housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Yo me llamo María.
My name is María.
Y vivo en Shalimar 18.
I live in Shalimar and 18th.
También tengo ese problema de las rentas.
I also have that problem with rent.
Que es muy alto.
It's very high.
Y me preocupo por mis vecinos, por mis parientes.
I worry about my relatives and my neighbors.
Trabajan mucho.
They work very hard.
Y no hayan como si pagar renta o darle de comer a sus hijos por el costo de renta que tienen que pagar.
But the cost of rent is so high that they have to either choose on paying rent or food.
Yo soy muy sentimental.
I am very sentimental, and I worry.
Todos mis vecinos y toda mi gente. Yo no represento ningún distrito.
I worry about my neighbors and about everyone around me, including my family.
Muchas personas andamos recolectando comida.
Many of us are collecting food.
Yo sé que es bien, pero yo creo que ustedes no tienen un problema de esos porque tienen su buen trabajo, pero gracias a Dios.
I know that that's okay. You know that you guys cannot relate to that because you have good jobs and you don't have to do that.
Y también pues, por lo mismo que dijo la señora anterior, que pongan mucha atención en sus distritos, porque también los apartamentos igual, digo. Mi apartamento, las ventanas ruenan mucho y no dejan...
I also want to reiterate what the lady before me said. Take a look at the apartments. The apartments in my house, they rattle every time.
Y decimos a los managers y no hacen caso.
We tell the managers, and they don't do anything about it. They don't pay attention to us.
Pero sí cada año doscientos de renta más.
But every year, $200 more.
Yo tengo como unos ocho o diez años pidiendo mis ventanas.
I've been asking eight to 10 years about my windows.
Hasta me asusto o se asustan los demás porque tiembla mucho con el aire que ahorita está.
Everybody gets scared because it's so windy and, you know, they just rattle too much.
Pero les doy, les agradezco que ustedes pusieran un poquito de atención para nosotros porque también existimos en el mundo los hispanos.
Because, and I would be very thankful to you that you pay attention to our pleas because we also live in this world as Hispanics.
Y lamentablemente nosotros los hispanos venimos aquí a trabajar, a ser California y muchos estados más.
Because we come here as Hispanics to work and make not only this state but other states bigger and better.
Tenemos derecho a nuestras cosas que merecemos.
We have the rights for everything that we deserve.
Porque pagamos impuestos también.
Because we also pay taxes.
Y debemos de tener una vida digna también.
And we should have a good life that is healthy for us as well.
Es todo. Que Dios los bendiga.
God bless you.
Y gracias.
And thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Last week, I attended a meeting held by the state about plans for an emergency operations center at Fairview Developmental Center. Project includes a 35,000-square-foot office building, a 20,000-square-foot warehouse, a helipad, and 120-foot-tall communications tower. The site is at the rear of FDC, which means that the daily traffic would have to wind through the site and would likely require new roadways. My questions to you are, what is the city doing about this? Is staff writing a letter requesting that information be included in the EIR? Is the city contacting the HCD about how this will impact our housing element, given that part of the site is where the city was planning high-density housing, which is now being removed? What is the city doing about notifying the public of the project and this helipad and communications tower that is as tall as a 10-story building? This is going to have a big impact on the surrounding community. I hope you're doing something, but I would appreciate it if you would enlighten us. On another subject, with respect to the report by the Active Transportation Committee, I'm glad to see that they're still doing great work. We need the city to follow up on this committee's recommendations because the 2020 Office of Traffic Safety rankings are out, and Costa Mesa did not improve. Our 2020 rankings were, and keep this in mind, that the lower the number, the worse we are. So if you're number one, you're the worst. Bicyclists killed or injured six out of 61 cities. Last year, we were nine out of 59. Pedestrians killed or injured 16 out of 61. Previously, we were 20 out of 59. Our composite, which includes vehicle deaths and injuries, 14 out of 61. Previously, we were 23 out of 59, cities of similar size. And I note that the figures do not include our freeways, they're only city streets. So I'm hopeful that things like lowering the speed limits will help reduce our numbers for 2023. Your advisory committee has some excellent recommendations, and I hope that you take them seriously. But one thing I'd request is that the meetings of this committee be recorded for those of us who cannot make the 5:00 PM start time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Rafael Vieira.
My name is Rafael Vieira.
Yo en esta tarde vengo a dar mi opinión.
And in this afternoon, I come to share my opinion.
Sobre la droga.
In relations to drugs.
En las escuelas.
In schools.
Y la inseguridad.
And the security.
En las calles.
On the streets. Safety on the streets, sorry.
Yo sé que no toda la responsabilidad es de los maestros en las escuelas.
I do realize that not all the responsibility are the teachers in schools.
Sino de los padres también.
As well as the parents.
Que deben de educar a sus hijos.
They need to educate their children.
Mucho problema también con los teléfonos, la tecnología.
There's a lot of problems with telephones and technology.
Está haciendo perder a los jóvenes.
Actually, we're losing kids with that technology.
Más seguridad.
More safety.
En las escuelas.
In school.
Checarles.
Check.
Entradas y salidas.
When they go in and they go out.
En los baños.
The bathrooms.
Las mochilas.
The backpacks.
Ya que en las mochilas es donde ellos guardan la droga.
Because in the backpacks is where they hide and keep the drugs.
Porque el fentanilo.
Because fentanyl.
Está destruyendo nuestra juventud el día de hoy.
Is destroying our youth to this day.
Necesitamos.
We need.
Sean más duras las leyes.
That the laws will be harsher.
Sería todo. Muchas gracias por su atención.
That is it. Thank you very much for your attention.
Is anyone else from that, your group, wish to speak?
We're good, thank you.
Yes?
We're good.
We're good? Okay. So that's going to close public comments for in the chambers. Madam Clerk, is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Kevin K., please.
Mr. K., you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens and council members. Kevin Cook, longtime Costa Mesa resident. I want to thank the city for providing sand and sandbags to us residents during this atmospheric river event and high winds that we were all suffering through. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Wow, okay. Well, that closes public comments then, and so we're going to move to council comments and committee reports and suggestions. And so for that, we're going to start with District 3, Councilmember Andre Amar.
Thank you. Just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments first. Regarding the Newport Center Animal Hospital, we actually have not continued to renew that contract. We're in the process of revising it and are intending to put it out to bid again. And that's something staff's working on. We've had a lot of internal conversations about it. I'm happy to talk to anybody who's interested in that, but I've heard a lot of the concerns and we are responding. Regarding Project Home Key, I agree, I would love us to go for around three. I'm not 100% sure that staff has the bandwidth for that right now, but I agree it's an important thing for us to do, and I look forward to the Motel 6 opening in its newest iteration. For those who might have received some false propaganda on Facebook, that is housing for veterans and seniors, that's really important for our community, and I'm looking forward to that opening. I think it's going to make a noticeable difference. Regarding Fairview Developmental Center, as I shared in person at that meeting, the city is meeting regularly with the state. The timing of that meeting came as a little bit of a surprise. It was certainly moving on a faster timeline than we were expecting, but we've had a lot of conversations about the Fairview Developmental Center moving forward, and that is absolutely part of the outreach plan, is to make sure folks are aware of every component of what goes there, to the extent that we can as a city, recognizing that some things are out of our control at the state level. Para las promotoras, thank you for being here. It's really important that we hear your voices. Yeah, I think some of them left, but I'm happy to go on a walk. I know I've got a meeting set up in a couple of weeks. But, you know, a lot of the comments that were brought up regarding safety are very much things that we need to keep hearing. So regardless of status, regardless of where you live, regardless of what district, make sure that you are using the Costa Mesa app, that you're calling the police, that you're letting any of your council members know about issues related to safety, landlords, speeding. Those are things that we can work on and can continue to work on. I feel like I had, oh yeah, that was my last thing. Just for the city manager, I got a request the other day about whether or not the airport commission is something that we can send anybody to, whether we've been getting those meeting minutes or just making sure we're staying in the loop. I know that's probably the mayor protest purview now with District 6, but I had a request from Newport Beach on that the other day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is from District 5, Councilmember Arlist Reynolds.
Great, thank you. Thank you all who've stuck it out now for an hour and a half. We're just getting started in this meeting. You're welcome to stay all night. I want to respond to a couple comments. I agree with everything that Councilmember Mar just shared. It is really important to stay in touch with the very difficult challenges that many are experiencing in our community related to housing, safety, food insecurity. As I was listening to the stories tonight and continue to digest stories that I hear in conversation throughout the community, you know, I think about the priorities that this council has set, and we are, I think, very aligned with those. We've prioritized housing solutions in our community. We've created rental support programs. You heard a presentation on our focus on safe streets. We continue to grow our community engagement, community relations. I was really happy to see our staff actually passing out some of the flyers of the resources we have to folks who need it. And if anyone here needs any support related to rental assistance, I think there are flyers still in the back for those programs. So I'm deeply appreciative for our council for the priorities that we have set related to some of the most difficult challenges in our community. Okay, so pivot a little bit. I mentioned priorities. I wanted to thank our staff and the team for the council, the all-day council session that we had, I think it was just last week, feels, I'm not sure, that we had recently. I thought it was a really great session. I thought that I was really thankful for how prepared our staff were for that session. I really appreciated the sort of presentation of the priorities as you've heard it, right? Your sort of your proposed plan for 2023 for us to respond to. And it was very much aligned with certainly what I've been sharing on the dais and what I think I've heard from the other councils. So I wanted to sort of just mark my appreciation for that session and then note that I fully expect that we, you know, understand that we still need to whittle down all of those ideas. We got the ideas that you, you know, you thought you've heard from us, and then we threw a few more on the board. I'm interested in, you know, what we do for the next step to whittle that down, to sort of lock in our plans for the coming six months, 18 months, and so on, as we've done in the past. So thank you for that. I left that session just continuing to be proud and excited about the work that we're doing in the city. Something I was remiss that I didn't mention in our first council meeting this month was just acknowledging the women... just acknowledging the women on our leadership team. This is Women's History Month. Sometimes we're just so focused on moving forward on the agenda. I realized later that evening that we had forgotten to acknowledge that. We have an incredible team here across all of our staff, but this month we'll do a special acknowledgement of the women, starting with our city manager, exceptional city manager, who came to our city just in time for a global crisis and led us through that. We've got a wonderful city attorney here who keeps us in check and helps guide us according to all of the legal proceedings. So many wonderful department heads, our finance department, Ms. Belina, I think I saw Jennifer Lee out there, planning department. Gosh, now that I've said a few names, I'm going to miss some. I get to spend a lot of time with our transportation manager, Ms. Rosales. Brenda, our city clerk, keeps everything in order. Captain La Pointe and Roxy Fiat, I saw back there on our police department. There we are, okay. Just thank you for all of your work. The whole team on the fifth floor. Alma, on a much-deserved vacation. Hadassah Francine, Ivis, Arzo, Janet. Thank you all. I'm so sorry for everyone I forgot. Our Parks team. I'm so proud of the work that we're doing in the city, and again, everyone, but this month it's about the women, have led us through some really, really difficult times, and I want to thank you all for your leadership. It's a huge part of how we've been able to be so successful in the last few years despite all of the challenges that we've been given. In the same theme, want to invite anyone who's interested to an event that Councilmember Mar and I will be at with our transportation manager. It's an event highlighting women in engineering. So this is Wednesday, is that right? Wednesday next week, yes, Wednesday next week, March 29th, at our Norma Herzog Community Center. It's an event that's led by the Newport Mesa School District Career Technical Education Program, highlighting graduates of our local schools, including myself, Go Estancia, and other women who are working in different engineering fields, including my council colleague, Councilmember Mar. So I hope you come to that. It's a really, it's going to be a really nice night just to hear about jobs that women are doing in the engineering field. And one more item, just one quick request. I know our council, I'm sorry, committee appointments are coming up, something we haven't done in a while that I think we should do as part of that appointment process, is just do a council review of the purpose, scope, and purpose and scope of all of our committees. So if we could include that with the committee appointment agenda, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up from District Four is Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for being patient with us. Particularly those students that are joining us today. Thank you for being here. I'll begin with an invitation. So this Saturday, Savor Youth, in conjunction with our police departments having a bike safety event at Savor Youth located at our elementary school from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If you have a bike or you're interested in biking in Costa Mesa and want to make sure you're safe, I invite you to attend the event. I will be there with my brand-new bike. I bought one, I got one recently, so terrified of being in the streets for now, but I'll see you guys there if you want to come by and go to that event. I also want to comment a bit on the comments of the promotoras, who I know did not stay for our council comments, unfortunately, but I just want to assure them and the public that we are doing the best we can to address these concerns. A few residents that spoke were actually residents from my district, District Four, that live in Shalimar Drive. And what I will share with the public is that we are working in conjunction with the MPD. They've been an amazing partner in making sure we're keeping that community safe, in making sure we have opportunities to create more engagement with the community, to build more trust. It's incredibly important to me, as a person of that community, as a person who is Latino, who grew up in the city, to recognize that sometimes it falls on us to get more comfortable with things we're uncomfortable with. I grew up being told never to call the police because when I was growing up, we had a prior council member who wanted to bring ICE to our police department. Our own police department didn't allow that. And I think sometimes finding ways to bridge the divide, to bridge the fear, is important. So what I say is, we have a great department. We have a great police chief who is being proactive and is willing to engage with the community, and I'll do everything I can on my part, make sure residents know that we care for them and want them to be safe. Alongside that, I think it's important to recognize that this is now the third or fourth meeting where we have residents talking about the difficulty of paying rent and the difficulty of their living situations. I saw recently at Buena Park Council meeting, they are looking at adopting an ordinance that will allow their code enforcement the ability to inspect departments, to make sure they're up to code. I know a lot of the calls I get in my district from renters are predominantly issues with code enforcement, of their homes not being adequate, or there being issues with their homes. And oftentimes, the most marginalized communities, those that only speak Spanish, that are fearful of talking to city officials, they're the most hurt. So I know there's a lot on our plate, but if we can just look at that, look at their plan for however long we can do it with our busy docket, just to see if there's any ideas we can pull from other cities, because ultimately what they're saying is correct. They're paying a high wage for their rent, a high rent, but sometimes their apartments aren't the most up to code. So that's something I want to just encourage staff to do. I also want to echo Councilmember Reynolds about the committees and appointments. I do agree with her. I think it is time for us to look at all our committees and see which are obsolete and which we want to keep. And one thing, too, I want to say is, I have noticed we have a lot of individuals that serve on multiple committees. We have an individual that serves on a committee and a commission, and I think it's not fair for the public to have so many people taking up these precious spots. So I want to see us, when we have the discussion, to perhaps bring back a council update or a council update to rules that say one person can only join one committee slash commission. I think it's more equitable, and I think it allows more fresher voices to join these committees, so that everyone has a fair chance. And finally, I do just want to acknowledge a bit of history. This past Friday, we had St. Patrick's Day, and it's a fun celebration all of us celebrate. But seeing the Costa Mesa, that day is a day that'll live in infamy. In 2011, a prior council furloughed, or tried to furlough, all city employees, and a young gentleman, Hugh Nguyen, committed suicide in this very building. I mention this because it's important to never forget these things. It's important to recognize that the city itself has come a long way when it comes to valuing its employees and valuing the community. And one thing I want to say is, of course, I want to, in the meeting, in honor of a few fans, but it's important for me that the public recognizes that the council is always going to make sure the city is protected, and in that regard, that our staff is protected, because ultimately, when things come down to it, it's the staff that serves the city. So to all city employees, thank you. To the public, just know that that memory still stays with us. A lot of folks in this dais got involved publicly due to that incident, and I think it's important to recognize that there's always room to improve, but we don't forget what happened. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. From District Two, Councilmember Lauren Gamarros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of brief things I want to talk about. We did have a retreat recently, last week, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge staff for putting together a very well, hard-worked-on presentation. I know that Jennifer Lee was fielding a lot of questions along with Rajah, and I just want to say that it does not go unnoticed, the hard work that all of the directors are doing, all of the managers are doing, everything that staff is doing to keep everything in order, to keep the city moving. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of moving parts. I know sometimes maybe the hard work goes unnoticed, but I want to speak for myself and along with my colleagues and say that everybody's hard work does not go unnoticed. It's greatly appreciated, and I know it's a struggle sometimes, but when times are tough, we get tougher, and it's the hard parts that make us better. So I just thank everybody once again for all of their hard work and diligence, and I do look forward to continued efforts on all of the great projects that we have coming forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. From District One, Councilmember Donald Harper.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the people that come out and comment. That's the thing I appreciate probably the most about these meetings. You know, I just wrote a check to Barry, one of my employee's sons, who killed himself with an overdose from fentanyl or a related drug. And so I'm going to be reaching out to the fentanyl, I think her name was Janice. It's something that kind of gets you, and it's a problem we don't really address, I think. And part of our homeless problem is fentanyl and other drugs, so I'll be doing that. I agree with the other council members that mentioned the subcommittees and committees. We need to really look at that. I've seen them before and served on committees in the past, and there's no clear objectives in some of the committees, and I think it's wasting a lot of staff time and maybe confusing others. On a happy note, Flock Camera Systems, thank you, Chief Lawrence, and Lieutenant Watkins, I think worked on that. For all of you that did work on it, thanks so much for rolling that out. It's kind of something I think is going to be really helpful, and you're going to tell me if it's not. And maybe in 90 days, you come back, and if that's not the right number, come back some period and say, hey, here's what it did, here's what it didn't do. And, you know, I did talk to Lieutenant Watkins about if there's a neighborhood that you don't want to put one in, but they want to put one, the neighbors want to contribute, they waive, Rajah can waive the permit fees, somebody, maybe I know somebody in the city that can waive the permit fees and get them in, and then you have access to them. So it'd be a good program, and I really appreciate it. I think someone told me this, but if, Lori, Anna, you could just update us on when, I've got a lot of questions about the Costa Mesa Tennis Center RFP. If you just give us an update, I think it's April. It's coming back, but if I'm wrong, correct that. And who is here, who are the students here? Can you raise your hands? How many? Are there a lot? Okay, that's quite a few, you poor souls. Who are the, where are the glider people, the soaring committee? Are there a lot of people here for that, too? Not so many. I'm just curious. Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem from District Six, Jeffrey Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to respond to a few comments made. First, acknowledge and appreciate the residents of the East Side who came to speak about Bradwood Park. I'll just note for the council, I've lived here 17 years, that park equipment has not changed one bit. And my kids, my oldest was, I think, the age of the girls who is here, so it's time to reinvest in that park, and I'll be advocating for that when we have our CIP discussion. In response to Mr. Humphrey's question about the inclusionary housing ordinance, it's my understanding it's coming to planning, commission, and council in the coming months. If I'm wrong about that, Ms. Farrell Harrison, please correct me. On the Motel Six conversion, I echo the comments of my colleague, Councilmember Mar. It's an excellent project. In fact, there were two articles, Voice of OC and I think Daily Pilot, this week, which were very good articles about the intent behind that, as well as the collaborative efforts with a lot of our local partners. And then lastly, just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate an East Side mainstay restaurant, El Matador, Mexican restaurant on Newport Boulevard, celebrated its 57th anniversary this week.
All right. Now I'm hungry. So I thank you very much, council, for everybody, your comments and the public comments. Thank you very much. Just a few things. So on Saturday, I went all the way down to Dana Point to participate in an event that was put on by Supervisor Foley, and I was so happy that Roxy Fiat, our Public Information Officer for the Police Department, was honored for a woman, women making a difference throughout Supervisor Foley's district, District Five. And it was great to be there with Chief Lawrence and Captain La Pointe. It was very nice, and it was a good opportunity to honor somebody who's so important to our city. And then a couple weeks earlier, I was in Irvine. I didn't have to drive quite so far, and we gave, I was there for Cotty Petri Norris, her district, she has the Woman of the Year for each city in her district, District 73, the Assembly District. And the recipient was Jennifer Friend from Project Hope Alliance. And so she does some spectacular work. She's a wonderful person, and it was an honor to be able to present that to her. And then I want to mention that Nate Robbins, our Neighborhood Improvement Manager, was on this new little venture I have. It's called Tea It Up with Tom and John. So we have a little podcast that we do twice a month, and I'll be pushing it out. And so Nate was my guest, and he talked, it was a short podcast, and we talked about all the things we're doing to address homelessness in the city of Costa Mesa. And so if you see that out there, just click on it. It's a quick listen, and you'll, I think, be very impressed by Nate and the work that we're doing at the city of Costa Mesa. And then finally, on Saturday, I attended an event with council members Reynolds and Mar that marked the 10th anniversary for Trellis. And so I just wanted to note that. Trellis, you know, does such great work on homelessness, education, neighboring, and prayer in our community. So I just wanted to recognize their 10-year anniversary and congratulate that. So those are the things that I have. City Manager Report, Ms. Farrell Harrison, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you. I just have a few updates for everyone. First, I wanted to just talk about the first art crawl that we've ever had and what a success it was. And so the Parks and Community Services Department hosted its first art crawl on Saturday, March 11th. It started at City Hall with community members boarding the shuttle to begin the crawl. The first stop was the home studio of local artist Kate Ryan. The next stop was scheduled for the commercial studio space of local artist Gabrielle McLean. And at both stops, the participants heard brief remarks from the artists with delightful snacks and beverages provided at both locations. The third stop was the beautiful and new Orange County Museum of Art, where crawlers were given a special tour by both the chief curator, Courtney Finn, and Amanda Seedler, the collections manager. So a really unique opportunity to see our beautiful Orange County Museum of Art in person, very intimate setting. After the museum tour and the Q and A, participants returned to City Hall, marking the completion of the city's first art crawl. So thank you to all who participated in the very first Costa Mesa Art Crawl experience for Women's History Month. On behalf of our art staff, they had a blast hosting our community, and we look forward to hosting more unique experiences in the future. Obviously, thank you to our Arts Commission as well, that's been working with staff to make sure that we have great events such as these planned throughout the year. Thank you to local artists Kate Ryan and Gabrielle McLean, and to our fantastic new art museum, the Orange County Museum of Art. And of course, thanks to Parks and Community Services Director Jason Minter and our art specialist, Laurette Garner, for making it all happen. That's good, Laura. Bring your own cheering section. I like that. Now for a quick, very quick homelessness update. Our efforts to address homelessness continue to be a success. As of February 2023, 274 people have been housed, and this is a great accomplishment because not only are we housing folks straight from the shelter into permanent housing, but we have an incredible street outreach team for the individuals that cannot make it into the shelter or choose not to live at our shelter. We have active case management that's happening on the street with people that need services and are seeking permanent housing. And so between both efforts, for those that are sheltered and those that are on the street, we are able to actually get housing for them. And so really happy with those results. Thanks always to the Network for Homeless Solutions, Nate Robbins of our team, John Beegan, and all of the individuals at Mercy House, and all of our great staff that are on the outreach team. Also, Trellis and CityNet, they also provide great services alongside these teams. And so a lot of great work that's being done to get people back on their feet, which leads me to the next point, which is rental assistance. And so we've heard from our residents that more needs to be done for us to educate our renters about their rights. And so we will have a Spanish-language event this Thursday, on March 23rd, from 5:00. we will have a Spanish language event this Thursday on March 23rd from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And so, uh, please, uh, attend. If you know someone that needs rental assistance, please have them participate in this event. We will have individuals from both Mercy House and Families Forward. We have contracts with both organizations to work with families and individuals, get into the details to be able to offer, uh, rental assistance. At this point, the city has put more than a million dollars towards that effort. We will continue to add funds from federal grant funds that we have as needed. And so please spread the word, uh, to, to anyone and everyone that you know that could use this help. The Fair Housing Foundation will have a presentation on various topics such as tenant rights, protection from eviction, housing discrimination, rent increases, and much more. And starting at 5:00 p.m., the residents will have a chance to speak directly with our city's rental assistance program operators that I just mentioned, Families Forward and Mercy House. They will have case managers on site to provide information about the rental assistance programs, housing navigation, access to employment and counseling services, and much more. Light refreshments will also be served. And so, um, there'll be a chance to win some new Costa Mesa gear too, at the event's opportunity drawing. And so please spread the word. Uh, we really want to help anyone who needs help. In the meantime, if anyone needs assistance, uh, you can reach out to Mercy House at 714-836-7188, extension 153. Uh, and for Families Forward, if it's a family in need of rental assistance, that's 949-552-2727. That's 949-552-2727. And so, um, please, please, if you know anyone that is struggling with rental assistance, please tell them about this, um, event on Thursday evening. Um, we also need community input for a virtual meeting that we'll have to learn about proposed bicycle wayfinding signage in Costa Mesa and share your ideas. As you know, we have been enhancing our, uh, bikeway and mobility efforts and have many more, um, you know, bike lanes throughout the city of different types. So please take part in the Zoom webinar on March 28th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Give some feedback on wayfinding and signage in the city that would help in this regard. And then, um, just some feedback on a few of the items that have come up on the floor. Uh, let's see here, where will I start? Council, thank you for the encouraging comments regarding staff's, um, efforts at the strategic planning retreat. We have more work to do there. Uh, Council Member Marr, we will follow up on the Airport Commission and, uh, the topics that are being covered there and, and what our activity level is there. We'll, we'll let you know. Um, we concur on Project Home Key, to the extent that we can get additional funds from the state and the county to enhance our efforts and to actually have more motel conversions, and we can increase housing units faster. We're absolutely pursuing that, and Nate Robbins has that on his list of projects that he is moving forward with. And we have some candidates that might qualify in terms of some of our local motels and property owners that are interested. Um, students, um, this is a shameless plug, we have jobs for you. And so one of the things tonight is, uh, some of our positions in parks for the summer. And so we're paying $20 to $23 an hour and up. And so hopefully you can apply. Why work at Chick-fil-A when you can work for your own city? And so please, uh, we need to fill 50 positions, part-time positions for this summer. And so, um, $20 an hour, just saying. Okay? And then, um, let's see here, we will be conducting a formal investigation regarding, uh, the, the incident with the, with the, with the cat. And so obviously, um, we care about animals and protection, safety, and their health and well-being. And so, uh, we will be conducting a formal investigation on that. And Carol, can you provide an update on the Tennis Center RFP? Thanks, those are all my comments.
Good evening, Council. We are currently still in the process with the Tennis Center RFP. We set out clarifying questions to our top three bidders. We are anticipating those responses back next week, and at that point, at the week of April 3rd, um, we will be sending up interviews with these, those final bidders to come forward. And at that point, once we go through that process, we'll be bringing back, um, city staff recommendation to you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the City Attorney Report. Ms. Barlow?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have one brief item I want to report on, um, the council and the public heard many comments from a gentleman, um, who, um, brought a claim against the city and the fire department specifically, um, Mr. Corum, regarding, uh, fire at his home. Just wanted to let you know that lawsuit has been dismissed. Um, and thought you should know that.
Right. Okay, so now we're moving on to the consent calendar. These consent calendar items will be, um, voted on in one motion unless the staff, the city council, or the public pulls any of the items. Madam Clerk, have any items been pulled?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that's good. Uh, can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve, uh, consent calendar?
Okay, motion by Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Harlan. Um, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, let's take a, a 15-minute break before we do our new business items. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. We're back on the record. We have, uh, four new business items tonight. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read our first new business item?
This is the adoption of the side letters of agreement between the city of Costa Mesa and the Costa Mesa Police Management Association, Costa Mesa Fire Management Association, the Costa Mesa Firefighters Association, adoption of accompanying salary resolutions for the CNPMA, CMFMA, CMFA, Costa Mesa Division Managers Association, executive employees, and the Confidential Management Unit. Presentation by Ms. Lee, Human Resources Manager. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. As you know, one of the city council goals is to recruit and retain high-quality staff. As part of this goal, we review our salary and benefits with our various employee groups through the labor negotiations process. In November of 2022, City Council approved a new memorandum of understanding with our Costa Mesa City Employees Association, which included the following provisions: a 2% based salary increase in January of 2023, a 3% based salary increase in July of 2023, 3% based salary increase in July of 2024, reduction of 3% cost-sharing retirement contributions, health contribution of $50 per month effective January 23, January 24, and January 25, half a percent deferred comp contribution, and updates to standby vacations, sick leave, and shift assignment pay. Also, in November of 2022, City Council approved a side letter of agreement with the Costa Mesa Police Officers Association, including the following: a contract extension to June 30th, 2025, a 2% based salary increase in January 2023, a 2% based salary increase in July 23, which was a net 5%, a 4.25% based salary increase in July 2024, reduction of 1.25% cost-sharing retirement, recruitment and retention incentive of 2.5% to 10% based on years of service with the city, and specialty pay of 5% for certain highly specialized, uh, assignments. All of the city agreements previously negotiated during the pandemic included Me Too or re-opener provisions. An approval of the CMCEA and CMPA agreements led to discussions with other employee associations. New side letters and council resolutions that we bring forth for approval tonight. The key provisions of the agreed-upon Costa Mesa Police Management side letter includes a contract extension to June 30th, 2025, 2% based salary increase in January 2023, a 3% based salary increase in July of 2023, which is a net 5%, a 4.25% based salary increase in July 2024, 1.25% reduction in retirement contributions in July 2023, recruitment and incentive pay ranging from 2.5% to 10% depending on years of service, and a 2.5% for specialty assignments. The Costa Mesa Firefighters Association side letter that we bring forth today includes a 2% based salary increase in January 2023, 23, and a 5% based salary increase in July of 2023. Retirement, uh, 1.25% reduction in retirement contributions for July 23, and a recruitment incentive pay of 10% for 25-plus years of service. Provisions of the Costa Mesa Fire Management Association side letter that we bring forth today includes a 2% based salary increase in January 2023, a 5% based salary increase in July of 23, 1.25% reduction in retirement contributions for July 2023, and a 10% recruitment and incentive pay for 25-plus years of service. Key provisions for the Costa Mesa Division Managers Association includes a 2% based salary increase in January of 2023, 5% based salary increase in July 2023, and up to a 3% reduction in retirement contributions depending on retirement tier in July of 23. Key provisions for the unrepresented employees, which includes the executives in the Confidential Management Unit, include a 2% based salary increase in January 23, 5% based salary increase in July of 23, and up to a 3% reduction in retirement contributions depending on retirement tier in July of 23, and a conversion from holiday pay to certification pay for the police chief. The current Consumer Price Index is currently 5.1%. The estimated increase for fiscal year 2023, 2022 to 2023 is $342,271. Estimated annual fiscal impact to the city's fiscal year, 2023-2024 future budget is $1.8 million. Recommendations today is for the city council to approve and adopt the side letter of agreements with Costa Mesa Police Management Association, the Costa Mesa Firefighters Association, Costa Mesa Fire Management Association, and to adopt the resolutions revising pay ranges and benefits for this Costa Mesa Police Management Association, Costa Mesa Fire Association, Costa Mesa Fire Management Association, Costa Mesa Division Managers Association, and the unrepresented executives in Confidential Management Unit, to improve the fiscal impact analysis and to authorize the city manager and the city's negotiations team to execute the side letter documents and resolutions inappropriate into the respective departmental budgets. The staff is available to answer any questions on this item.
Okay, Council, do you have any questions, Ms. Lee? Okay, I don't see any questions. Let's open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item from the chambers? I don't see any. How about on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment, so I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Councilmember Marr. What is your motion?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, and sec, seconded by you, Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Okay, good. And so, um, do you have anything you wish to say, uh, in support of the motion?
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank everyone who worked really hard on this, starting with yourself. Um, but this was a lot of, um, you know, back and forth, but in the, in the best possible way to come to agreements that make sense for, um, both the city and the employees' associations. I think Councilmember Chavez did a really good job at the beginning of this meeting, emphasizing just how important it is that, you know, we have good relationships with staff, that we are supportive, that we demonstrate that we couldn't make the city run at all. Like, we literally couldn't do any, we could, we couldn't even turn on our microphones, frankly, without staff, right? Um, and so, you know, it is, it is hugely important for us to make sure that these are collaborative negotiations, that we, um, accomplish the, the goals that are needed. This is a question I ask all the time, especially in these negotiations. What is the problem that we're trying to solve right now? And in our case, it's very much recruiting staff, retaining staff, making sure staff understands that they're appreciated and valued in the city. Um, and so, you know, I was, I'm proud to be a part of these negotiations because I think they accomplished all of those things. And, um, I just want to say a huge thank you to everyone involved, um, notably our city manager as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes, thank you. So, I want to echo my colleague's statements, and I also want to go along and say that there really is a high expectation, and staff comes and they meet that high expectation at every turn. I can remember having a job, kind of wondering, how come my boss never thanks me? And then one day I was told, you get a check, there's your thank you. So, what I will say is, our thank you back is for all the hard work that you do with all this increase that we can provide for you guys and ladies. I'd like to thank Cosima for her hard work. She really facilitated a lot of back and forth. That was mentioned earlier. There was a lot of question and answer that took place. A big learning curve for me, and, uh, I'm glad that I got to be a part of it, and I'm extremely happy that we had a, a, a great, uh, negotiation on both sides where all parties came out having what they wanted. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Do any other council members wish to speak to the motion? Okay. Just really quickly, I, of course, I, I do agree that the staff, uh, in, in Costa Mesa is the best, and they deserve, um, our recognition, and also, the, you know, the real recognition is the compensation, which is commensurate with the great work that they're doing. And this, these, this particular item reaches back to, um, the pandemic, when we asked the staff to come up with, um, a furlough, really to help the city get through that. And of course, every single bargaining unit stepped up to the plate. And so a lot of these items that we're talking about now are part of that negotiation. And so I'd like to thank the staff for being with us during the dark times. And now when things are getting a little better, uh, we can all enjoy those benefits as well. So, um, that's all I have. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Now, we have, uh, next item is a new business item, number two. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title?
Thank you. Fiscal year 2022-23 mid-year budget update and adjustments including recommended staffing changes. Presentation by Ms. Molina, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council. It is my honor tonight to present to your fiscal year 22-23 mid-year presentation. I do want to take a moment, though, to thank the staff that made, um, all this happen, including, uh, Cosima Lee, Jeanne Forchin, Kathleen Strano, Stella Giragosian, um, and some other city staff throughout other departments. Tonight, we're going to go through the 21-22 year highlights, 22-23 mid-year overview, some mid-year adjustment requests, our year-end general fund balance, and our budget calendar. Back in February, I came to you with the fiscal year 21-22 year end results, where we were able to achieve we were able to achieve $4.3 million in surplus for our general fund reserves. We allocated one and a half million of our surplus into our Section 115 trust fund. We fully funded the CAN and our IT strategic plan, and we continue to receive our award-winning ACFAR with an unqualified clean opinion from the city auditors. For our 22-23 general fund highlights. In the current adopted budget year, City Council approved the all-funds budget of $206.2 million and a general fund budget of $163.6 million. Fifty-three percent of that is dedicated toward our public safety. Additionally, the City Council approved 11 full-time custody staff for our Costa Mesa Police Jail Operation Services, resulting in an amended budget of 561 full-time employees and 114.8 part-time positions citywide. Our current year, we were able to balance the budget without the use of ARPA money or the reserves. We successfully negotiated labor contracts. We fully funded the IT strategic plan. We continue to maintain strong credit rating. We implemented a plan to provide an additional $2.8 million towards our equipment replacement fund, and we prefunded all Kyle Pers unfunded accrued liability payments, saving the general fund almost $900,000. Where are we today? In 22-23 adopted budget, we adopted a budget of about $163.6 million. Our amended budget, as you can see, we're seeing our revenues increasing to $167.5 million. Our expenditures of $165 million. We're estimating at this time about $2.5 million at year-end. Our three-year council goals and priorities are to strengthen the public safety and improve the quality of life, achieve long-term fiscal sustainability, recruit and retain high-quality staff, diversify, stabilize, and increase housing to reflect community needs, advance environmental sustainability and climate resiliency. And then, at the retreat, we also discussed to maintain and enhance the city's infrastructure, facilities, equipment, and technology. In our Parks and Community Services Department, we are requesting a title change from one Assistant Recreation Supervisor to a Recreation Supervisor, and one Recreation Supervisor to a Senior Recreation Supervisor. There are no costs related to this request. We are also requesting to convert some part-time positions to full-time positions for an increase of 0.54 positions to add those positions that are hard to fill and retain existing positions for consistency in staffing. In our IT department, we are requesting to add an office specialist to assist our administrative staff with some administrative assistance and annual maintenance contracts with software and hardware vendors, archiving, formatting files, among other things. In our city manager's office, we are requesting to reallocate an assistant city manager to a deputy city manager position, and we're converting multiple part-time positions to two full-time positions for a net FTE adjustment of .37 FTEs. To diversify, stabilize, and increase housing to reflect community needs. In our Development Services Planning Division, we are requesting to add two new full-time employees, a senior planner and a planning and sustainable development manager, to assist the department with multiple programs and projects, including inclusionary housing ordinance, community visioning and rezoning, and state mandates. In our advance environmental sustainability and climate resiliency, our Public Works Department is proposing to create a new division to focus our city facilities, fleet, and sustainability, and also proposing a title change from principal engineer to assistant city engineer. With this request, there is no cost. To maintain and enhance the city's infrastructure, facilities, equipment, and technology, our Public Works Department is requesting two additional positions, deputy director of public works, and a senior engineer to help support the city's capital improvement program. To strengthen the public safety and improve our quality of life, our Police Department is requesting to add one deputy police chief position to augment their day-to-day operational and increased oversight for internal audits, personnel matters, safety operations. In this case, we were going to need an adjustment to the motion since the salary range has been In our Fire and Rescue Department, we are currently under review. To recruit and retain our high-quality staff, these are hard-to-fill adjustments that we're requesting. These are positions that are currently vacant, or not currently vacant but are traditionally hard to fill, or currently filled but are expected to be difficult to fill due to their position in the market. In our Parks and Community Services Department, we're requesting to update multiple part-time positions in senior community services leader positions, our senior lifeguard positions, our instructor guard positions. In our city manager's office, we're requesting to update the assistant city manager compensation for a market adjustment to address internal alignment. This provides you with a historical staffing levels. As you can see, we are still 50 full-time positions below where we were back in 2019, about 8% reduction of full-time employees. In order to provide you where we are with our general fund balance, as you can remember, we ended the year with almost $57.8 million in our reserves. For our budget calendar before you tonight, it's a 22-23 mid-year budget adjustment request. We're anticipating to come back to you in April for a study session for our next year's proposed budget with a public hearing on June 6 and a June 20 alternate date. With that, I will open it up to questions.
Council, questions? Councilmember Marr?
Just a quick one on Slide 28 showing the FTE count. Before fiscal year 9 and 10, way before you were here, how long were we at that 600 number? Do we know? Was that a blip in time, or were we historically closer to 600?
We were historically closer to 600, but I can get you those numbers offline.
Okay. It's not urgent. I just want to make sure. My sense is, it's not an outlier. That's where we were for a prolonged period of time, and really, it's taken us 13 years to get closer, but not nearly back to where we were. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? All right, just one.
Yes, of course, a quick one.
I mean, Councilmember Harper.
It's all right. Can you list annual impact of wages? Does it include, it includes benefits, I'm assuming?
Yes, that's correct. Fully compensation.
Pointed the wrong way, sorry. Does it include pension benefits as well?
Correct.
So, some kind of a?
It's fully burdened.
Formula, okay. Thank you. That's it.
Right. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? I don't see anybody coming in from the chambers. How about on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Closed public comment. Let's have a motion. Motion again by the Jeopardy winner, Councilmember Marr.
Sorry, I just clicked on the button today, I guess.
Okay, so what is your, what is your motion?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation with the modification of the deputy police chief annual impact as recommended by staff.
Okay, good. Second by Councilmember Chavez. Do you wish to be heard on the motion, Councilmember?
If you're a part-timer in the audience, raise your hand. Yeah, thank, I know, it's pretty awesome, actually. Thank you all for being here. Again, this is really important that we do that. I feel like I'm just repeating what I said partially from the last motion, but I'm really glad you all are here tonight. I'm really glad that we're taking these steps to slowly get that number up. I think the seven of us are all ambitious. We want to get things done for our districts. We want to see the city do as much as we possibly can. We send regular emails to the city manager and department heads, asking for more, 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 and the reality is, we need more people in order to do all of those things. Not to mention the fact that, and I think Councilmember Reynolds said this really articulately a couple of months ago, but it's the, it was a really loud sigh. Okay.
Heavy breather.
Okay. Yeah, you know, there's the things we have to do in terms of public safety, but then there's this huge area of quality-of-life issues that are really about the Parks and Community Services Division, and the extent to which, you know, not just parks make life better, but really, the services that we're able to provide as a city make Costa Mesa an amazing place to live. So, I think to the extent, and I'm focused on the part-timers because there are so many of you here in the audience today, but I think across the board, we're doing what we need to in order to create a more sustainable city operation and frankly, meet the quality of life that folks expect in Costa Mesa. So, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. And yeah, thank you, guys, for staying. Thank you, staff, for staying. And I hope this is a reminder that we value you. You are ambassadors to the community. You're the first people folks see when they think of Costa Mesa. So, I think these changes are necessary for us to continue our commitment to Costa Mesa residents in providing a high-quality service. So, thank you all for joining us in this venture, and very happy you guys are getting raises, so.
Okay, yeah, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, just one, one quick remark. Well, two quick remarks. It's never just one, right? So, first of all, just acknowledge, this is, you know, part of a long effort and very strategic effort to address the recruitment and retention goal that we've set, and I want to acknowledge our staff for doing this in a phased approach, right? We didn't just say, "We just need more people everywhere." It was very, very targeted to address very specific needs, and I really appreciate the approach we've taken and glad to see that it's working. Just one example that I want to highlight of a position that I'm particularly excited about is a new one that we haven't had before, and that's this Planning and Sustainable Development Manager. This is an example of a specific need that our council has talked about as we embark on a very large and ambitious and necessary planning and zoning effort for our city over the next few years. We want to make sure, of course, that we have the capacity to do it, but also that we're doing it in a way that aligns with our values around environmental sustainability and really smart and thoughtful city planning system. To have someone coming in with that particular focus to join our fantastic team, I think, is really great. And I, my understanding that this idea came up from, you know, staff hearing what we've been talking about, what we've been requesting, and doing research to see what other cities are out there, what other cities are doing out there. So, just an example of how responsive you all have been to staffing needs for the work you're doing every day, but also are the goals that we've set here on this council. So, thank you for that, and very, very happy to support this motion.
Yeah, before we call for the question, unless there's others, I just want to say to Director Molina, thank you. This is a very efficient and almost elegant presentation, I will say. I was like, I was looking at, I felt the weight of this PowerPoint. I was a little worried, and you went through it so smoothly and beautifully, so thank you for that. And what that represents is, it takes a lot of work to do, to make something look simple. So, thank you for that, and thank you then. But that's really the roll-up from all the directors, and I know that the directors have many needs, and they really prioritize what they need and were very reasonable with what they requested. And so, I appreciate that restraint and that judgment and under the, you know, under the guidance and management of the city manager. So, thank you for your work. Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you, Council. Congratulations. Okay, number three, third new business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Yes, this is Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for the Design of Fire Station Number Four Training Facility. Presentation by Mr. Seth Rahm, Public Works Director, and Mr. Yang, City Engineer.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, we're excited to bring you this item. It's a much-needed project for Fire Station Four. It's for the training tower. Mr. Yang, our city engineer, will make the presentation, and we can answer any questions you may have after that.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and honorable members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Sung Yang, your city engineer. It's my pleasure to present to you, to this council, the Fire Station Number Four, which is the Training Facility Reconstruction and Architectural Design Services Award. So, a little bit of background on Fire Station Number Four. Fire Station Number Four is located in District One at 2300 Placenta Avenue. It provides fire protection, emergency response services to the surrounding Costa Mesa community. Fire Station Number Four also houses our training tower and associated infrastructure, which is used for critical training needs for the entire fire department. This training tower was built back in 1966, and the Fire Station Four complex houses approximately 1.4 acres. The training tower has went beyond or exceeded its useful life, is no longer compliant and suitable with the current standards and modern building codes and personnel capacity, and also training schedule demands. Therefore, this training tower is currently subject to periodic structural inspections and repairs, and recently, the balconies have been structurally supported as well. Regards to funding, State Assembly Member Cadi Petri Norris has secured for us $2.5 million to the city to rebuild Fire Station Number Four Training Tower into a state-of-the-art regional training facility. This project includes the reconstruction of the training tower. It also includes the enhanced water recovery through modern water reclamation elements to reduce water waste as utilized as part of the training exercises. And also, it upgrades to existing lighting to include energy-efficient LED fixtures and incorporate solar-powered backup energy as well. This will include design of a fully-operational five-story prefabricated training tower structure, and the pictures you see there are representative examples of this training tower. There will be grounds improvements with cost-efficient concrete pavement. There will be ingress and egress improvements for the site. There will also be remediation of water recovery through modern water reclamation. And finally, there will be solar panels to provide backup energy when needed. So, in summary, in order to conduct this project in order for it to be designed well, the staff had a request for proposals, or also known as an RFP, which was advertised back in December 8, 2022, and the following year, on January 6, we received proposals. Staff reviewed those proposals and concluded that PBK Architects was the best and most qualified of them all. And to let you know, PBK Architects is currently designing Fire Station Number Two and has previously designed Fire Station Number One. The design contract amount equates to $362,000. Complete construction documents and project specifications will be created. And also, back in fiscal year 22-23, City Council approved $3.6 million of capital facility funds towards the design and construction of Fire Station Four for the training tower and grounds reconstruction, and that included the $2.5 million in state earmarks received through the assistance of State Assembly Member Cadi Petri Norris, as we previously discussed. So, therefore, that concludes our short presentation, and staff is happy to answer any questions from the City Council. Thank you.
Council, any questions? No? No? Okay, good. No questions. Anybody, let's open the public comment. Anybody from the chambers wish to speak on this item? I don't see anybody. How about on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Closed, closed public comment. Oh, do we have somebody who wishes to speak? Oh, yeah. Come on up, come on up.
I actually had a question more than a comment, and?
Hold on one second.
Hi, sorry. My name is Bettina Eastman. I actually had a question more than a comment, and I wanted to know about bird-strike-proof glass, because I noticed in the slide, it looked like the glass was reflective, and that might cause more bird strikes. And so, I'm hoping that maybe in the design phase, they'll consider putting bird-strike-proof glass. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to speak on, I heard that they were talking about the fire department and also College Hospital, Victoria Street. There are human trafficking- and also College Hospital on Victoria Street. There are human trafficking. They have people in there for insurance money. They can't get out. And also, it's dirty. I would like an investigation in that hospital. And also, they have, they also stabbed me with medication that almost killed me, which was an attempted murder. But I'll speak about that next week. We, and they also, if you would like, I would like them to do an investigation inside to see how dirty the walls are. No one with the issue, internal issue that seeks help deserves that kind of treatment. And they should be shut down. And also, I would like to speak on the police. They had, they are also doing racial profiling throughout the community. And just in private, my, my friend was parked in a private property, and police had racially profiled me and tried to stop him illegally. And I will get into that next, the, when the next meeting is. But I would like to address, yes, there's a lot of corruption in this city, and I'm interested in getting justice. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else, anybody on, we asked, I asked you about Zoom already, right? Okay, still no one on Zoom? All right, good. We'll close the public comment. Oh, it looks like Councilmember Gamaros is the big winner with the motion. Councilmember Gamaros, what is your motion?
I move to accept the city recommendation.
Okay. And Councilmember Chavez, you second that?
Second.
Wonderful. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I will briefly. So, you know, I see a number of things take place, and I always wondered, how do we facilitate improvements? And where there's a need, it seems like we always come through. And it, it makes me happy to know that we can come through for our fire department, when I know that they're always coming through for us in our time of need. One of the things I've said before, and I'll say it again, when things are at their worst, we expect them to be at their best. And now isn't quick enough when you're dialing 911. Everyone here, pretty much I can say, has had to dial 911 at least once in their life, and they couldn't get there quick enough, no matter what the reason is. So if we can help improve our fire department, make them safer, more efficient, then I fully support that. So I just want to take a moment and thank staff for putting together a really great proposal. And I want to thank the fire department for everything that they do as well. That's all I have.
Okay, wonderful. And Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I also want to echo Colonel Gamaros' sentiments. This is something that's going to improve the quality of life for residents, because it's going to ensure that our fire department has the tools they need to be trained and ready to go at any moment's notice. Also, we were remiss to not thank our great Assembly Member Cardi Petri Norris for getting us this funding. It's through her partnership that we're able to do this in a more excited way. So again, I want to thank her for her commitment to Costa Mesa. And again, I want to thank our, our fire department for serving our community. As always, we'll do our best to make sure that our employees and our staff has the tools they need to succeed. So thank you.
All right, let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
Right. Thank you, council. So the last item is item number four on our new business calendar. Madam Clerk, would you please read that item?
This is Discussion Regarding Environmental Incompatibility of Model Aircraft Flying Field at Fairview Park and Consideration of Staff's Recommendation to Close the Model Aircraft Flying Field to Protect Sensitive and Rare Species and Habitats at the Site. Presentation by Mr. Minter, Parks and Community Services Director.
Okay, you have the floor, Director Minter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn it over to our Fairview Park Administrator, Kelly Dalton, for a presentation.
Thank you, Director Minter. Good evening, City Council and Honorable Mayor. Tonight, we're presenting before you the new business item number four, the Model Aircraft Flying Field at Fairview Park. Just to go into a little background on this item, in September 2021, staff presented the model aircraft activity proposals for City Council consideration. The direction included evaluating activity during the master plan update, considering other sites, including Fairview Development Center, and permitting only gliders going forward. Since then, staff has engaged the model flying community, stakeholders, wildlife agencies, and the steering committee to fill, to fulfill the City Council direction. The model aircraft community, the PACS Commission, and the City Council have requested an update on the status over the preceding months. So staff has conducted an exhaustive review and synthesis, considering a breadth of historical information, regulatory agency communication, Fairview Park Master Plan, which is currently underway, the update of that plan, as well as environmental documentation associated with the Fairview Park Master Plan. So to review a little bit of the history and the last 60 or so years of this activity's presence in Fairview Park, the, the activity of model aircraft operations first was observed in the 1960s and 70s, when the models of soaring, sorry, model soaring begins in the west bluffs. The prevailing winds coming from the west created ideal lift conditions for those types of soaring planes. Later in the 1980s, winch launching and thermal flying became more popular. In 1993, as Orange County's North Talbert Park received some grant funding for development and restoration, there were some trees planted. In 1998, for about a three-year process between 96 and 98, the city prepared and developed the Fairview Park Master Plan. And in the late 90s and early 2000s, those trees planted at the base of the bluffs in Talbert Park. They began to mature and grow, and it created some turbulent conditions for soaring activity in Fairview Park. So this exhibit displays the original glider landing and launch sites as associated with the 1998-adopted Fairview Park Master Plan. Continuing that history and chronology of the model flying activity in the park. So in the early 2000s, there became a sort of an observed growth in popularity in larger, faster, more powerful propulsion-based aircraft. So that, to accompany that, there was larger needs for space to, to take off and land those, those different types of aircraft, as opposed to the original glider types that were more soaring-based and vertically launched into the air. Between 2002 and 2005, the Harbor Soaring Society planned and designed a runway to accommodate the powered propulsion aircraft. And this was also, they were interested in shifting away from the restroom building, because that new type of aircraft activity posed more of a conflict with, with park users, particularly near the trails and near the restroom building, and those vertical structures, which posed a conflict with the new propulsion-based mechanisms of flight. In 2005, the original runway, a runway of about 150 feet by 470 feet, was graded to accommodate those motorized aircraft, their takeoff and landing. In 2009, that runway was again expanded, widened an additional 70 feet further towards the west, closer in proximity to the Vernal Pool One and into the Vernal Pool One watershed. So this map displays in cyan and with a yellow border, that's what we refer to as the Vernal Pool Watersheds. So the, there are three known watersheds, the Vernal Pool One, Two, Three being the largest on the northwest. In the south, that's Vernal Pool and Vernal Marsh Four. And on the east, that's Vernal Pools Five, Six, and Seven, which are really collectively comprise a watershed, or sorry, a Vernal Pool Complex, which is critically important. The areas in, in red and orange depict the original and grading beginning in 2005, and then that expansion that occurred in 2009, showing kind of the encroachment into that protected watershed zone. So the staff analysis considers these impacts in, under four separate categories. Those consist of Vernal Pool Habitat and Wetland Impacts, Threatened, Endangered and Protected Species Impacts, Safety Concerns, and Lack of Environmental Documentation for Site Modifications. So just to provide some context about the Fairview Park and its Vernal Pools, the Fairview Park and Randall Preserve, their Vernal Pools represent actually the last coastal Vernal Pool Complex in all of Orange County, and really one of the last remaining Vernal Pool Complexes in, in all of Southern California. Makes it incredibly unique, but also incredibly important to the wildlife agencies and to the multiple layers of environmental regulatory agencies that are involved in specific resources within those pools. The Vernal Pools themselves as a wetland feature are highly sensitive to hydrologic disturbances. Any kind of surface disturbance can really affect the geochemistry of those, those systems and alter them and, and make them less habitable for native plants and wildlife. The Vernal Pools host a wide variety of protected and endangered species, in addition to a number of sensitive and rare plants that are under the Californian Native Plant Society's watch list, as well as the federal and state endangered species list. The pools provide critical foraging habitat for a wide variety of birds. The degradation in, in Vernal Pools really results from recurrent pedestrian encroachment and access within the Vernal Pool Watersheds, causes trampling of native vegetation, very sensitive native plants that, that exist only within those pools, as well as soil erosion from the loss and damage to the vegetation. The Vernal Pools have been the source of a significant competitive restoration funds and mitigation funds over time, dating back to some of the original master plan discussions for Fairview Park about shortly after observation of those pools in 1994. Specifically, one of the conflicts that arose as well was that the wildlife agencies communicated that model flying activities should not be performed in or over sensitive resources, specifically including Vernal Pools, coastal sage grub, riparian habitat, and native habitats that are considered sensitive on the mesa. Next, going into Threatened, Endangered, and Protected Species Impacts. There's a few specific species we wanted to point out, just to, for those that may not be familiar with their appearance. This is the burrowing owl. It actually is observed in Fairview Park. It, it's been observed fairly recently, actually, in relatively close proximity, actually, to the, to the Vernal Pool, to the, the model flying activity, or former flying activity area. This is a species of special concern under the state's designated list. The whitetail kite, also located in Fairview Park and adjacent Talbert Regional Park. The northern harrier, another species of special concern, and the endangered Californian gnatcatcher. So these are some of the most recognizable avian species that really depend on this, this habitat on the mesa and the Vernal Pool ecosystems, in addition to many other protected and protected birds under the Magatory Bird Treaty Act. The full list of, of special status wildlife and plant species, as we call them, a number of these are on the federal and state endangered species act list. We did not have an image of the San Diego fairy shrimp, or the Riverside fairy shrimp, but they're a little bit less difficult to identify, but nonetheless are, are present within those pools, in addition to seven, at least seven known, either listed or federally protected native plant species that are only found in and along those Vernal Pools. So some of the safety current concerns that were also a part of the consideration, we really dug into decades of reports in the city's archives and, and records associated with the model flying activity. Some of those reports made by residents at Fairview Park include concerns about reported uncontrolled flying, multiple crashes in vegetated areas, Vernal Pools, along the steep bluffs, many along trails in very close proximity to near, to, to users and park passive users going through the park. There was actually multiple instances of crashes into, in some cases, other operators and near other aircraft operators in the vicinity, occasional fires resulting from those crashes in, in the brush, a relatively frequent observation of unpermitted retrieval, you know, in closed-off areas and fenced-off areas, including the bluffs, multiple instances of people retrieving their gliders and aircraft on the westerly bluffs, where there's about a 70 to 80-foot vertical drop, and also multiple reports of close proximity flight in, in proximity to passive park users. This map shows really the trails that are designated within Fairview Park as part of the Fairview Park Master Plan. We're actually updating, we are, this is a, a new addition that we will be adding actually, a formal designated trail system, which will be an important asset to the park and to users of this, this facility. But really, it shows the, kind of in red overlay, that is the designated HSS operational area, as approved by the John Wayne Airport Tower. So this is currently where permitted flight activity would, would be considered allowed, if, if that activity were to take place. Just as a, as a side point, you know, gliders sometimes are understood as a relatively benign and, and sort of less impactful type of aircraft, but gliders can actually be some of the, the fastest, most highest-speed types of aircraft. They can often reach over 10 feet long and speeds of over 100, well over 100 miles per hour. There have been instances in other flight areas and operational areas where collisions have occurred, very severe collisions with, with park users. A limited number of occasions where actually fatalities resulted from those collisions with gliders, not, not in Fairview Park, but at other designated flight, model flying activity areas. And just as a, you know, a contextual point, that staff has, has really seen a, a great spike in park visitation over the last couple of years since the, the rise of the, or since the reopening of park facilities after the COVID-19 pandemic. So that poses an even greater risk of sort of conflicts and collisions with, with aircrafts. Next up, there's a lack of environmental documentation for site modifications. So going back to the original Fairview Park Master Plan and the associated negative declaration that was adopted for that plan, there were two types of gliders, or sorry, two types of, of model aircraft activity occurring or permitted by that plan. There was the gliders at the bluffs and a small glider launch site located near the restrooms, which was shown in a prior map. In the Fairview Park Master Plan, it indicates the launch string clearing is to be limited to one foot in width on the ground. Now, you know, just from a, a very quick aerial view, we can see that the, the clearing of that launch string access point, which is in the Vernal Pool One watershed, is closer to about eight or 10 feet, so that that has been significantly exceeded. Also, in the initial study, negative declaration, no grading was associated with the model flying activity area. So that, that limits what was permissible under that sequel analysis. Additionally, the grading, soil compaction, and disturbance when, within the sensitive Vernal Pool ecosystems was done with, without environmental impact assessment. So these two maps show sort of the original, the green, the original 1998-adopted Fairview Park Master Plan, with which the negative declaration was analyzed and adopted. And on the right, the Vernal Pool Watersheds and the subsequent shift and intensification into a larger conventional model aircraft runway type, type site that was, became, you know, impact or became present on the site. And in many ways, this, the, the system is still dealing with the impacts from that today. So with this information, the staff recommendation is that the City Council provide direction regarding whether to permanently close the model aircraft flying field at Fairview Park and terminate the model flyer permit system due to environmental compatibility of the preceding four categories: Vernal Pool and Wetland Impacts, Threatened, Endangered, and Protected Species Impacts, Safety Concerns, and Lack of Environmental Documentation for Site Modifications. I'll open up to questions.
Questions? Councilmember Marr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. For the city manager, I just want to potentially sort of narrow the scope of the discussion, both from the dais and from the public, and that 18 months ago, we had already removed motorized flying aircraft from consideration. And so the only thing that we are potentially terminating or restricting at this point are gliders, because council had previously taken action on anything motorized. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So just, you know, Mr. Mayor, for the So just, you know, Mr. Mayor, for those commenting, I just want to make sure, like, that's what we're talking about. It's not, it's not a free-for-all. We're not opening it back up. We're taking a secondary action following previous council action that had already limited the scope to gliders. Thank you. That was.
That's your question? Okay. So, Councilmember Harper.
Thank you. I'll try not to sigh or breathe.
Those are really loud sighs.
What is it? I'm sorry. There's a new Ted Lasso on tonight, so I wanted to get going. Do you, so we turned it, we shut it down in 2021, and, but we were going to allow, we waited for a new, like, ordinance for the gliders, right? And that just never happened. Is that correct? I think that's correct. Is there a slide that shows, well, let me back up, because it doesn't matter, I guess, because the vernal pools, doesn't matter where they're at, you said there was sensitivity to gliders flying over the vernal pools.
Yes.
How is that? What's the, how's that?
That is, in part, due to, the vernal pools are a feature, but they're also really part of a larger system. So the integrity of those vernal pools themselves is affected by the uplands, the area surrounding them, or the watershed. But the flight over it is really a concern from the regulatory agencies because of the inherent risk of it landing in those pools themselves. Model aircraft, you know, as an activity, is experimental in many ways. It's much less risky to crash a model aircraft than a manned aircraft. So it is, there is a process of learning, and that's part of the reason why many larger open sites away from human activity are selected due to, you know, alleviate the risk of conflict with users and potential crashes.
Are all the vernal pools section where a person just walking through the park can't walk on there, are they restricted areas? In other words, can a person walk across the vernal pool the way it's designed right now?
No, the vernal pools are currently fenced off.
Fenced off. So the only thing that can run across them is a dog off a leash, a coyote, and a rabbit, and a squirrel.
Correct. In a, in the sense that, yeah, the city allows and permits those other activities.
What was the, do we know the percentage of powered aircraft versus the gliders when they were out operating?
As to the proportion of or distribution of them, I can't speak to exactly. I think early prior, pre-2000, it was much more prevalent to see gliders out there. And then in probably 2000, 2010, 15, it was the motorized activity became more popular in general, just within the hobby itself. And so it became more prevalent and observed at Fairview Park.
And how often are, or did you observe these folks out flying these aircraft? Was it every day? Was it the weekends? Was it five people, 10 people?
Difficult to say. From my position in this specific role, that would predate my time in this role, but I had seen them, it was a fairly regular presence at the park.
Yeah. I mean, I used to go in that park almost every weekend with my kids, and there'd be a couple guys out there, and it just didn't seem like a lot. I just never noticed a big crowd or a large number of planes. I might see two or three planes in the air at the most, maybe one. So I'm just trying to, is there any documentation or any way we can understand, since we stopped having them fly planes, is there any improvement in anything? Or there's no way to document that, is there? There's no evidence that says this got, this has been helpful, because I don't know who's walking through a vernal pool, to be honest. I mean, that's kind of the nature of my question.
It's difficult to definitively point to one feature and say whether or not, you know, that's, that a particular increase or decline has been attributed to one thing, but we have seen the bird surveys that have been done over the last three years have seen a pretty remarkable diversity of protected bird species that require protections and, you know, minimizing any disturbance to them on their own. But that has been done really over the last three or so years that, since parks were initially closed and then, and surveys began.
So it's really hard to, hard to measure, truly.
Yeah. Environmental systems are very difficult to measure in general, but certainly, there's sort of, the totality of the circumstances can be considered when weighing all those potential, you know, factors as well as impacts.
What happens, what do you do with the landing strips if you take, remove them? What is done with that space? Is it changed or altered, or is it just left? I mean, it looks like, sorry, forgive me. It's a very natural area, it's like a big patch of dirt to me, but.
Yeah, the long-term plan would be to restore that to consist of primarily native grasslands and sort of the, yeah, the original indigenous species that would have existed in that area predisturbance. That would be the.
So you restrict some areas and you plant? Is that what you do?
Right. Remove, remove, you know, the dense, not native bank that's there, and then invasive species, and then eventually plant with native plants that are supportive of the vernal pool ecosystem.
You know, it's a really good report, and I read it, and I got a headache, but did you, did you talk to any of the people that use the park for this purpose? Did you get any feedback from the model aircraft folks about, you know, ideas they might have or their opinions? Or the benefits that the kids that get to fly a plane or the, I got a letter here from an 80-year-old guy that loves it, and they love the use of it. Did you guys get any feedback, or do you have anything to share with regarding all the letters? And I know there's, there's some people waiting to speak, so just wonder what you gathered regarding that.
Over the last year and a half or so, we have, since I was brought on board in the end of November 2021, we initiated discussions with the Harbor Soaring Society representatives right away to try to, you know, consider the direction that was provided and begin implementation. And that's really when quite a bit of new information became evident that wasn't, you know, wasn't readily apparent at the time of change to gliders only.
Yeah, I was looking for some input from the, you know, what kind of benefit is this for our children, our kids, to get outdoors and do something? I was kind of looking for that. But maybe the people that speak will talk to, speak to that, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, I think Councilmember Reynolds was next, if you don't mind.
Could you go either way? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the report. Kelly, I know this has consumed much of your time since taking this position. So I just have a series of questions. I want to go through to make sure I've got my answer or the answers organized here. So let me actually start with some of the slides you shared. On slide, can we go to slide four?
Yes.
So this was the slide that showed the original glider launch and landing sites. I understand that the one sort of in the lower left there on a bluff, many challenges with that situation, given the condition of the bluff. Hypothetically, the landing site, launch and landing site on the right here, that's closer to the manicured grass area, that is outside of the vernal pool watershed, correct?
There is a slight portion of the vernal pool 567 watershed that does overlap with that. At the time, the 567 watershed as a whole was not delineated as a sort of a management unit. So the majority of it is outside of that area, but there is still about the lower 20% of it that's within.
So, okay. A fifth of it has a small overlap with a watershed. Okay. And the challenge with that location is more the sort of human impacts because that's a high activity area? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yes, there's, yeah, the, in very close proximity to and over the, some of the main trails and pedestrian thoroughfares, bicycle thoroughfares as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then related to the current site, you described sort of how that current site became the current site, that there was grading done without the appropriate sort of permits and environmental documents. If we were to use that site, is there a requirement that we do those environmental documents? Or how does that work?
Typically, yes, that would be best practice, most likely, is to acknowledge the, you know, the subsequent impacts that occurred after the initial sequo analysis that was done. So that would be best practiced.
Best practice, but not required.
I guess it depends on what our next action is, if we're proposing something that's defined as a project that could require additional sequo analysis and review.
If, you know, we're, I think have started now the master plan update, if that update included the continued use of the fly field as it stands, I think their work includes the environmental documentation associated with any recommendations in the plan. Would that documentation happen if that recommendation came out of the plan?
That, yeah, it does depend on kind of the results of the final product, the initial scoping of the consultant's proposal, plan for a negative declaration. So if there's potentially significant environmental impacts that are identified as a result of our updated plan, then that could entail something, an escalated level of environmental review, including potentially an EIR.
Got it. Okay. Okay. You showed a slide, and I didn't mark which one it was, that showed the John Wayne, sort of the approved, currently approved airspace for flying. And I was curious, and then, you know, about, that's like 50/50 over one of the existing watersheds, it looked like. How, I have no knowledge on this. Like, if we were, if we wanted to shift the approved flying airspace so that it wasn't directly above the watershed, is that possible? Like, did John Wayne just sort of pick that site because that's what we had designated? Or is that like truly the only allowed airspace in the area? Like, could that be shifted north, for example?
To my understanding, the designation of that area is something worked out between the Harbor Soaring Society and John Wayne Airport Tower. So they, you know, receive approval from the SNA Airport Tower for that specific operational area. Any shift to the north could pose some additional conflicts, given that there's prior, previously pursued and completed mitigation projects in the northwest lowlands, kind of the wetlands system, that is under mitigation contractual obligations, as well as other endangered species that occupy those wetlands and the surrounding habitats.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Regardless, right, we know there's a variety of activities happening at the park now that negatively impacts the resources that are described in the staff report. If we were to cancel all flying activity, there's still other impacts that are affecting the resources of the park. What enforcement strategies would we employ to shut down those impacts?
I guess, yeah, it would, it would be an ongoing communication with our police department and our rangers that support parks as well as Fairview Park. We're, that's something we are considering right now in the process of this master plan update, is sort of the behavioral component, that we may be able to influence or support better outcomes for the park. But that's something we're constantly thinking about, that, you know, education can sometimes play into that, better signage, more clear fencing. I know that's something readily apparent from, you know, an initial visit to the park, and that's something we're really, yeah, we're quite engaged with and thinking about regularly, so.
And the current, currently, we have, is it, what is the frequency that we have a ranger at the park?
It is typically, there's a ranger on staff most days of the week, but they are patrolling, you know, other parks as well. So at any given moment, it's difficult to say, at least at my position, whether or not, kind of the proportion of time that they are present at the park.
Okay. So, yeah, I think you shared a variety of, you know, potential solutions that would support enforcement and behavior changes, but we don't have, those aren't in place yet, right? We don't have any dedicated resources for that.
We do have the capital project for fencing signage and trails, so that is, you know, go into more.
Funded but unplaced, that's what I meant.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I have a number of questions related to just timing. So I know nesting season is something that we've had to be very careful about in terms of other activities at Fairview Park. Can you remind me when nesting season is?
It is species-dependent, but generally, you know, raptors may start as early as January, but sometimes even earlier, December. But for most smaller species, it, right now, is kind of peak of nesting activity starting. March, the early March is typically marks the nesting season as it's seen for non-raptors, and then that lasts usually until about September.
Okay. And what are the, like, specific protections or, you know, things that we cannot do because of nesting season? Is it nothing during nesting season, or is it only if there's a specific observance?
It would also depend on the species for, really, all native birds are protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, but specifically the native birds and the endangered species birds that are found in the park have additional protections and, you know, larger buffers from any organized activities, you know, making sure that monitoring is done for any kind of, you know, new activity proposed. Those would be typical requirements for either species of special concern or endangered species.
So what I'm understanding is that there is not a specific requirement to do, I know this is a little bit vague, but like, there's no rule that you can't do anything during nesting season. You're saying, take precautions, monitor, and then if there's a specific observance, we have to create buffers. Is that right?
Right. But as the, I guess, as the land agents or landowner, we would be responsible for limiting and prohibiting any known adverse impact. So if there's an adverse impact to an activity that the city is permitting, the agencies have communicated that, you know, that would make the city responsible if there's a known potential impact, and that impact results from a permitted activity, which is what really differentiates, differentiates some of the more passive and other illicit behaviors that may occur, but they are not something that's permitted by the city.
Okay. And what are the consequences for being irresponsible?
It could be, I guess, violations of the Endangered Species Act and other environmental infractions, rescinding of grant funding. Those are potential implications of allowing that or of those occurring.
Okay. Thank you. So nesting season, beginning of the year through September, September to December, not much of a deal?
Not generally considered impactful from, from the perspective of nesting activity, but disturbance to any wetland features would become another concern because the wet season typically starts in October and lasts till about April.
We are in wet season now, aren't we, in wet season now? It's pretty wet out there.
Yeah, exactly.
So wet season starts in October?
Yes.
Thanks, okay. So you were getting to my next cousin, which is, other than nesting season, what are some of the other sort of resource-related, environmental resource-related constraints? So you said wet season, and that sort of, what is that, like a weed-based, on ground conditions? So if it's a very dry winter, maybe we don't have a wet season?
Yes, that is more applicable to water quality and then Water Resource Regulatory Agency requirements, which involve, or which are, come into play with the protected vernal pools, which are a type of wetland. So that's when the wet season factor can come into play.
Okay. But that's based on, like, site-specific testing at any given time?
Typically, yeah, based on actual site conditions.
Site conditions, yeah, thank you. Okay. We mentioned it's been a rainy season. If we were to say, open the fly fields tomorrow, right, nothing's going to fly because it's, everything's covered in water. Given the current site conditions, realistically, if you can estimate, if it doesn't rain anymore, how long would it take that to dry out? How long until the site would actually be have the conditions dry enough to? How long until the site would actually be, have the conditions dry enough to use that fly field?
From-
Or use the launch site, I guess, yeah.
From right now, I guess it's difficult to say. If there was no additional precipitation, it could be within maybe six weeks to eight weeks, but it's a, that's a very rough guess. I don't, it's going to depend on humidity and other factors, I guess.
Wow, okay, that's faster than I thought. So it could be, if we have no more rain, it could dry up in a matter of a couple months?
Potentially, yes.
And then, so we've started the master plan process, I remember that was, I think, an 18-month effort. What is the, given where we are now, what is the timeframe for, around what time would you expect sort of initial recommendations from the, from that master plan update process? And that's a team that includes a wonderful team of biologists and, who are experts in these habitats.
The, would that be sort of the initial draft to City Council? I believe that is somewhere in the half to two-thirds of the range, or of the time schedule through that project, maybe in about 10 months to 12 months.
From now?
Yes.
Okay. So that's early next year. Okay. Okay, if council made the decision to, again, I think, to allow some level of flying at the park, what are the steps that would need to happen to do that, and how long would that take?
So first, that would be, I guess, identifying where the activity could occur, and then considering what potential conflicts may exist in those areas. It would be revised policy documents, all the, the ordinance particularly is an important one, the HSS use agreement with the city, the, there's some flight operational guidelines, there's an additional document to define those procedures and guidelines for model aircraft operations.
Okay, but you've done a lot of that work, right? Because I remember seeing some draft documents for that. We've done a lot of work on that, and you've gotten comments, I think there's been several rounds of review, comments from different stakeholders?
There's, there has been a proposed red line draft ordinance of the, sort of revising the original adopted ordinance from 2007. So that would be, it would be picking that up again and bringing it forth.
Okay, so, and what would be your best guess at how long it would take to update those? I'm trying to get a sense of timing, just kind of how these different pieces fit together, right, with the master plan thing in process, wet season, nesting season, what else, current conditions? So what would be the, your estimate on timing to go through the process that would still need to happen if we opened the fly field?
I, just to chime in, I think that would a lot, would be determined by what the direction was by council at the time. You know, at the last meeting in September of 2021, you know, with the direction to do gliders only, it was through, you know, meetings with HSS on-site that we discovered equipment that was needed for gliders that were in protected areas. So as long as we didn't have a recommendation from council or direction that would require any further steps for evaluation, because that was one of the things we were still working with HSS on, is to find a way to implement a glider system that did not coincide with the protected areas. And, you know, we had not reached a result on that even to this point. So I think a lot depends on what the direction is, is what we would be allowing, and that would determine the timeline.
If the direction was the same?
I would say the revised ordinance, we could have back in two or three months with the other documents to follow.
So one, two, three, okay. Which would probably be the time that the field is drying out? Assuming more atmospheric rivers.
It could be not holding standing water, but the soil conditions would still be very susceptible to disturbance and impact, that would be prohibited.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful. Last question, one of the other components of our last recommendation was considering other sites. So what, what have we studied and what did we learn about potential other sites?
We have looked at portions of the east side that could be considered, you know, other alternative sites for the model aircraft activity, at least within the park. There are some other conflicts, there's a couple vernal, or about three vernal pool features that have been identified, that is a pretty important raptor foraging and occasionally nesting site, and so there's additional conflicts there potentially. Outside of the park, much of the city's sort of lateral area is, or much of its aerial extent is, is within the radius of John Wayne Airport that limits any kind of airborne activity within, particularly the closer you get to the east side. So much of that is already sort of completely restricted. So the other potentially candidate sites would be, you know, areas outside of that that are not going to pose a conflict. But as it stands right now, just the information that we've gathered is that it does require a pretty considerable large area with, so if, you know, the other parks that are outside of that boundary, you know, are very popular for recreation and other park users, then there could be concerns there.
I think, add on to that, you know, one of the sites that was discussed was the Fairview Developmental Center, and I, you know, I think it's still something that could be included in those discussions, whether it be from the community or staff, but, you know, I think with, with all the ongoing, you know, the reference to the meeting that was held last week regarding that, you know, the state would be involved in those discussions. So in terms of other park locations, we haven't been able to identify a location that could serve as a full-time, you know, or a permanent flying field. There may be a couple of spots that we can work it in with other scheduled activities, but, you know, the estimated acreage that you would need to do this safely is about 10 acres, so somewhere in the eight to 10-acre range. And if you look at our parks that are west of Harbor, which is about the boundary that you'd need to clear in order to be far enough away from the Orange County John Wayne Airport, there's very few parks in our city that meet the eight to 10-acre requirement. But, you know, we are still exploring and would be looking ahead to potentially doing more singular events as opposed to doing a dedicated flying field.
Sorry, what do you mean by singular events?
Like a special event, you know, like, once a month or, you know, a couple of times in the summer, we would, you know, potentially host or explore the opportunity to host, like, a flying day.
At Fairview Park?
Not at Fairview, no, outside of Fairview.
Okay. And then, when are flying conditions ideal? Because I think for the non-motorized.
From what, from what we have been told from the Harbor Soaring Society and the model flying community, it's typically the summer months are better for, you know, more thermals and better, better wind conditions for model aircraft.
Summer, okay. Summer, early fall. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate you, usually I send a bunch of questions ahead of council meetings, I didn't have time to do that this weekend, so really appreciate you walking me through that, and thanks. I hope other people learn something too. Thank you.
Councilmember Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and bless you, by the way. Okay, I have a number of questions, and one of my asks, right off the bat, is if you don't know, just say, "I don't know," because I might ask you something that you really don't know, and I'd rather you just tell me, and then we can move on. How many people use the flying field to fly airplanes?
Presently, or-
Oh, I know it's zero now, but, I mean, before, when it was open for use, you needed a permit, right?
The last year it was open, in 2020, there were about 34 residents, I believe, permitted, and that, the resident population of the overall flight operators is maybe 20%, 15% to 20% typically of, so I believe there was about 120 or so of the non-resident flyers that were permitted.
And how much does a permit cost?
I, you know, since I joined the city back in 2020, the flying field has not been open, and I, we haven't issued any permits, I can check on that from staff and attendants, hold on.
It's okay, I mean-
My recollection is it's about $25, but I'll need to confirm that before.
Even if it was $100, and we had 120 people, what are we looking at to make the flying field flyable? Do you have a number on that? Is there an estimate on what it would cost to get it back to a usable condition so that we can launch gliders?
In the sense of-
Money.
Revenue offsetting impact, or-
A hundred grand, 500 grand, what are we looking at to get this thing flyable for 120 people?
You know, I think the, you know, there'd be some plant material that would need to be cleared, potentially the growth of whatever the plant life that has, you know, kind of taken over since the flying field has been closed. It's my understanding that all of the rest of the infrastructure for the winch launches is there, however, you know, we would need to relocate some, some critical pieces. I don't, I don't think cost would be an issue, I think HSS has the membership and the volunteers that would be willing to do that, to make it, you know, minimal of no cost to the city, if that was the direction.
At minimal to no cost to the city? So you could get, we could get this thing flying and it wouldn't impact the city financially?
There'd be some, some cost for signage, you know, the signs for the flying field had been taken down, so the rule signage and things like that would have to be done, so it would be, you know, in the thousands of dollars, perhaps.
Okay, so a couple of things happened. I went and visited a couple of the high schools that have CTE programs, and the reason I bring this up is because some of the, I believe they are constituents, I don't know where they reside, they reached out to me and they said, you know, "We have an engineering CTE program that caters to this flying thing." And I thought that was very interesting because I went to multiple schools multiple times, I didn't see much for airplanes in any of the classrooms. I saw one little wooden glider, and I asked the student if they knew what the Bernoulli effect was, and they looked at me with a stare like, "What?" And he said, "I don't know, I just made a little airplane." So one of my concerns is that if we're going to spend the time and resources for personnel, signage, clearing out a field, are we going to cater to the students at our schools? Do we have funding? Are we going to incorporate CTE funds to educate them? Because we really aren't, we haven't been. Maybe we're not because we don't have fields available, but if someone's going to come at me with, "Hey, we want to do this in our schools," and I even had a teacher reach out saying that they would like to incorporate that, so I fully, I fully support engineering in our schools. I really do, and I know as a hobby, it's a great release. Let me ask this, if we were, if we were to hypothetically approve a flying field, what would it take to approve an RC car designated usage area?
There are constraints due to Measure AA, so any constructed feature or additional activity that is not recognized in the original plan, the original master plan, or was permitted at the time of enactment of Measure AA, then any new facilities to accommodate that would be likely subject to Measure AA and a vote of the people.
So basically, in that area, we got planes, we got trains, but no automobiles, no cars, right? Is that what you're saying? Can we put it on where the trains run?
Currently, Costa Mesa Municipal Code restricts and prohibits model RC cars at all city parks, actually, so it would require-
And for what reason?
I believe due to degrading, you know, the-
The dangers involved with using an RC car? Kind of like the dangers involved with flying a glider? And I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
I guess I'm not sure about the original enactment of that code, of that ordinance.
I understand. I'm just trying to, like, get a wrap around this. So I have a couple of other questions, and I'm not trying to beat you up or anything, I'm just, I really want to make sure I have a good focused understanding of this. Vernal pool, can I swim in a vernal pool? Like, literally, can I go and jump in? Can I drown in a vernal pool? I hear a lot of talk about vernal pools, so is it a clear body of water? Is it a mud puddle? What is it?
It's usually less than about two feet of water. Maximum inundation, it might be close to three, but those, they're relatively shallow, it's not, not a huge depth, but it's formed with a clay pan that sort of retains that water and forms this unique assemblage of, you know, organisms that provide unique habitat and some, several rare plants.
So what's the mitigation protocol when a plane nosedives into one of the middle of our vernal pools? Then what? What happens then? You go traipsing through in our knee waders and pull it out, or how does that work? I know that, I know that.
Typically, they should not be flying in general over the pool when it's inundated, but that has been a recurrent problem in the past, that retrieval has been sort of done by the user, and they're typically supposed to contact the ranger and coordinate retrieval through, through the city, because disturbance of those areas is technically subject to a permit from regulatory agencies if there's any disturbance resulting from encroachment.
Okay, and then you also, you referenced regulatory agencies in your, in your presentation here. What regulatory agencies are we talking about? Can you, do you know specifically?
The Calif, yeah, the-
Go ahead.
The California Department of Fish and Wildlife for issues of state jurisdiction and purview, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service are the wildlife agencies as we refer to them, but there's also, the wetlands as, as features are subject to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction as well, and-
So three, three regulatory agencies, can we safely say?
As well as the State Water Resources Control Board for those wetlands.
And they've all given their opinion on the usage of this area for flying? Have they given an opinion? Did they say they'd like to see us fly airplanes there? Do they say, "We don't want you to fly airplanes there"? Like, what, what's their position on this?
The wildlife agencies have mentioned a number of potential infractions, violations resulting from the activity, so-
Infractions and violations, and who's responsible for those?
The city as a landowner.
The city, and there's a financial impact? They're going to say, "Here's a $10,000 fine because your glider, your lithium battery-powered glider crashed into a vernal pool and potentially leaked a Tesla battery or something in there, or?
There can certainly be fines. I would defer to the city attorney for, you know, specifics.
That's fine, okay. Now, I appreciate all, you answering my questions, I know, and I'm not trying to drill you or anything like that, but I just want to make sure that we fully understand the impact of opening this up to 34 residents and a total of 120 people to do this. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. Thank you, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
All right, thank you. I'm going to be quick, I know people have been waiting very patiently, and unless you're a glutton for punishment, you're still sitting here. So I have a procedural question, but let me kind of set it up first. So in September 2021, City Council considered this very question, and we had a very lengthy discussion. In fact, I went back and looked at the tape, it was actually really quite revealing, there was a lot of healthy debate. It was, it was a very difficult decision for a lot of us, and in fact, it was a split vote, but we did make a decision, and, and as you noted, Mr. Dalton, it was the three points. We directed staff to evaluate flying activity during the master plan update process, consider other sites, including Fairview- process, consider other sites, including Fairview Development Center, and permit only gliders going forward. So my question is, has any council member asked for reconsideration of that decision?
No.
Okay. So I'll throw it to Ms. Barlow. I mean, is this properly before us at this point?
It is. It's relatively unusual, but under the circumstances, I think staff has been evaluating as directed by the council in 2021, potential alternative locations for the flying field. And I think they're coming forward to tell you there aren't any.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of real quick questions. First question is pretty basic. Since the vote in September of 2021, have we done any test flights?
No, we have not.
Okay. And the other one is, I'm a little unclear about if, if you look at the, the figures in the staff report, which are on page six and seven, and they, they depict the, the watershed and then they have the, like the one on page six, which is figure number one. It has the, as I understand it, the watershed is all the blue area. It, it's covered with, it's bounded by yellow and it has these two things, the glider winch. Okay. There's two of them. And then if you flip over the next page, it's got what I think depicts the same thing, figure one, but there's only one glider winch. How many glider winches are there?
There are two glider winch anchors. The reason, the second exhibit, it, they, the labels overlap, so it makes it illegible. So they're virtually in the same location. They're in very close proximity. So that's why that second exhibit just shows them at one point because it's an enlarged, larger area. The way it comes out.
And then, okay, thank you. And the way, the, if you go to page four of the, of the PowerPoint presentation, if you could, page four. So this, this is depicts this, sorry, please put it, something happened to my screen. Oh, okay. This depicts the launch and landing sites. And it looks to me like the launch site and the landing site would be outside the watershed in this, in this figure, correct?
The launch land site on the east there, on the right, it is slightly overlapping with what is now the vernal pool five, six, seven watershed management area. So that entire area is.
So the entire area going, so your, your understanding is the entire area going all the way up to the grass is considered vernal pool watershed?
The, when, I guess, when you refer to grass, are you referring to?
See how this, okay. So, so see how there's a little curve there and then on the other side of the curve, on the right side of the curve, it's all grass, right?
Yes, just the, just the southernmost portion of that shape.
So the, so the very, the, like the little, very bottom of it?
Right. The portion carved out by the trail, basically.
Oh, I see.
The walkway.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll have him go to slide 13 because it shows the watershed with that same area.
Yeah, slide 13, sure.
So that shows the small overlap area on the right.
Thank you. Oh, whoops. Yeah, there we go. Oh, I see. Yeah. And then what is the red part? The, that's the land, I thought this was, oh, this is the landing area?
That's the, the area that was subsequently graded. And then the, the small, narrow extension is the, the access path to connect to the winch launch anchors.
Okay. So then the winch, how, how does it, how does a, a glider fly? I mean, I'm not even sure what a winch is. So how does it, what happens? How do you, how do you propel it?
For, for basic terms, it's kind of a slingshot, kind of a pulley system that they retract and then launch the planes. And I'm, I'm sure our HSS members can describe it in greater detail, but it's kind of a pulley at the end and it basically propels it. And the, the way they launch the plane, they kind of throw it up in the air. And then as it pulls, it, it just pulls it higher, straight up into the air and then releases and the cable falls to the ground and then the glider, you know, takes its flight.
Okay.
And then they retract it. They have to pull it back to the launch area and then they would connect the next plane. So it's constantly walking back and forth along that strip in order to access the, the launch anchor each time.
And does it, does, is the pulley, is that part of that winch that we looked at?
It's an anchor that they connect their mechanism to.
Oh, I see.
But the, the anchors are there now.
The anchors are there and the, the anchors could be moved?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right. And then do, do we have any information about when the fly field was open, how frequently gliders specifically as, as opposed to, you know, the motorized planes, how frequently gliders ended up in the, in the vernal pools?
We do not have a specific figure for the, how often gliders happen, but based on, you know, communication with staff, it was a fairly regular occurrence seeing aircraft in general flying and, and crashing into vegetated areas at least a couple of times per month while the activity was allowed.
So a couple of times a month, that includes all, at the time it was open to, you know, all kinds of motorized and gliders?
At least a couple of times that it, per month, on average, that it was seen and observed by, you know, maintenance staff that may have been in the vicinity. But, but, you know, they're in and out of different areas of the park throughout their, their shifts, of course.
Right. Right. Okay. Anyway, those are all my questions. Thank you. We got more? Go ahead, Councilmember Travis.
I swear I have the easiest question. Everyone's already asked the question I wanted to ask. Just for the public and my own understanding, what's the difference between a species of special status, floating species and federally endangered species? Like what's the difference?
So there, there are endangered species, which is probably the most, you know, elevated level of protection. Then the state has this species of special concern that are not formally declared as threatened or endangered, but they are still, they warrant additional scrutiny and, and, you know, monitoring for impacts to any of those species that are under state purview. So there's multiple different lists. There's, the state has its own endangered species as well as the, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has its own listed endangered species that are of national versus state significance. So it kind of depends on the, the agency involved, whether they deem it sort of regionally or more nationally or locally significant. So.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Still on? Oh, you're, okay. Yeah. All right. Let's open it up to the public. People in the chambers first. Yes, sir.
Can I start? Hi, my name's Kyle Muzier. I'm an in-house counsel at a local corporation. Thank you very much for your opportunity to, to speak. And I just want to implore the city council when, whatever action they take tonight or whatever action they don't take tonight, I just want them to consider the deterrence and incentives of taking action tonight. I, I think that deterrence and incentives are very, very important in, in government and in criminal law and any kind of law. And it's very important to our civilized society. One example, anyone that's familiar with legal shows is very familiar with the Fourth Amendment search and seizure rules. And oftentimes if a search is illegal, any fruits thereof are not admissible in court. And is that because we don't want all the evidence to consider things? No, 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 of course not. We want that. But it's an incentive. It's a deterrence from police officers acting badly. We want to deter future cops. It's not so much about the past police officer, but the future police officers and deterring bad behavior. And so ideally, we want to deter undesirable behavior and encourage good behavior. And so in the future, we don't want to encourage people either within the government or private citizens to ignore the direction of authority, perhaps the city council. And we don't want to set a precedent by this particular action item that might set a precedent for other action items. For example, if someone disagrees with what the city council says, you know, just avoiding carrying out what the city directed them to do. And we definitely don't want a situation in the future in any of the departments the city operates in. And it's a lot of, lot of departments beyond the, the parks department where, you know, people within the government or outside of the government are reaching out, you know, lottery to, to fate, to state or federal government agencies, you know, perhaps inviting litigation or instigating regulatory action. So when you act or whatever you do tonight, I, I really implore you to, to kind of consider the deterrence and incentives that you're creating in the future in, across all of the city activities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Schaefer. I've been a longtime model glider enthusiast since late seventies. And I actually taught high school that same period of time for almost 40 years. One of my favorite classes for myself and many of my students was my model aviation class. In that class, we built gliders, radio controlled, six foot wingspan, all balsa wood. And we would learn what it takes to build the plane. So you had to learn how to draw plans. You had to understand stresses, how to manipulate materials to overcome those stresses. So the airplane won't fall apart in the air. We had to learn about thermodynamics. And yes, Bernoulli's effect, which if any of you need some education in that, you should have taken my class. Because it was a combination of a shop class, a science class, engineering class. It was also a history class and studying the job market. So I thought it was the best class ever, but of course there are always certain people that thought, oh, it's Schaefer's class. They're just having fun building planes. But a lot can be learned in just building the planes. And when I fly my planes, when I used to fly, because I haven't flown for three years, it seems like. Fairview Park was my favorite. It was the park for Orange County. And it was within a 20 minute drive for me. So I still have 50 seconds. I'm here to ask you to permit glider flying. It has very little impact on the land. We respect the fairy shrimp. We always had, we love birds. That's why we love to fly. And the glider winch is truly one line out. You hook up the line and the pulleys. You walk back. And then you don't walk back out there until the end of the day when you tear it down. A landing area can be a grass field. It doesn't have to be a tarmac. So very, very, very little impact on the environment. And the quality of life you get.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Speaking on behalf of CN Sage Audubon Society in support of the recommendation made by the Fairview Park staff to close the Fairview Park model air, airfield. I understand the emotion of losing this. It's important to a lot of people. I'm sure there's science involved. There's also a lot of science in biology of the wildlife in Fairview Park. Fairview Park is rich in natural resources, varied habitats and unique features such as its vernal pools, as we discussed. CN Sage has engaged in numerous bird surveys since 2020. And we've compiled the list of 166 different species there at Fairview Park, including the federally endangered California gnat catcher, the least bells virio, the California species of special concern burrowing owl, which was seen recently, and the California protected species whitetail kite, along with many others. The other thing about Fairview Park is that it has a very robust raptor population or birds of prey. And many people come out to see them and you can see them foraging over the open areas of Fairview Park. And our nationally renowned raptor expert, Bill Clark, recently led a couple of field trips there because of this exact reason, that it is such a great place for raptors. The park is also home to unique vernal pools, as we've been discussing, with two endangered fairy shrimp, the San Diego fairy shrimp and the Riverside fairy shrimp. And we concur with the conclusion drawn by biologist Barry Nurras in his letter that he sent to staff, that the Fairview Park vernal pools are incredibly important and they are threatened by the impacts of the model aircraft operation. This is due in part to, part to their large geographic footprint. So given the unique biodiversity of Fairview Park, the need to protect the resources, the regulatory restrictions and the concerns for public safety, CN Sage respectfully requests that the city adopt the conclusion of recommendations of the, the Fairview Park staff. Thank you very much for your time.
Would you like to go? Yeah.
My name is Richard Morley. I didn't think I was going to speak this evening, but I decided I would because I'm also being deprived of flying over at the park. And I think you should understand the type of people that were there for one thing. Many of us are senior citizens. We're retired. A lot of vets who flew over there fought in the Korean War. They fought in the Vietnam War. They fought in the Gulf War. We didn't go up there to kill birds, step on fire, on the shrimp. We went up to talk, fly and spend our days and our mornings up there. We have hardly any other enjoyment in life anymore. We paid our taxes. We've served our country and we keep getting kicked in the teeth. When the government can't meet their budget, they say, we're going to cut out social security. We're going to take away vet benefits. And they kick us in the teeth. And we had a flying field that we took care of. It was never said that it was trash. There were plastic bottles. There was water bottles left up there, which you can't say about the trails. We policed our area. We kept it clean. We didn't bother anybody. And then someone came up and said, you're scaring away the birds. We used to fly over those trees by the restrooms and there would be birds of prey setting up there and they never moved. We had, we had pictures in the club of flocks of birds sitting on a runway and we were landing and taking off and the birds were sitting there watching us. So when people say, we are scaring away the birds, that boat doesn't float. That is not true. I, I, I'm going to stop because I can't believe we're getting punished again for something we're not doing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, I called the police concerning me being stabbed for no reason in the hospital and they laughed at me and did not respect me as a victim. And the supervisor cursed at me. And I would like to address and also just extend from what the first man had said. And I would like to address and also just extend from what the first man had said. We do need to educate the police department and help them with more ways to behave and also respect people because they did also use profanity. And also, they were saying, we know all about you, which is very unprofessional.
Excuse me, ma'am. Do you have anything pertinent to the flying field, the topic that we're discussing?
The topic is, it's an art, but also the plants and humanity comes first because that's what Jesus wants. And thank you. And please prioritize the police department's disrespect. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Hanson, Costa Mesa resident of over 50 years. I've been flying RC airplanes, gliders, and powered airplanes for over 30 years. And as the other colleague that appeared stated, we've done everything to protect that area and be friends with the birds, not to bother them, to respect the environment at the same time and enjoy the hobby and the camaraderie of flying the model airplanes at Fairview Park. I've been flying at Fairview Park for over 30 years. And we did everything we could to maintain the area, as he said, a clean area. The size of the runway that they show there is not consistent with what it was when we closed it down. We had a runway of approximately, probably about 40 feet wide by about 200 feet long. And it started just south of the bend there and the road there. And then the wenches were set up for launching gliders usually on the weekend. And they were, didn't go through the vernal ponds. They did go about another 30, about another 50 feet south of that area. But we've done everything we can to, like I said, to help keep the area clean and to prevent, you know, help train people how to fly the airplanes in a safe manner without, you know, encroaching on the environment and bothering the raptors or other birds. And as far as in the vernal ponds, I've seen numerous times of people encroaching, not just glider flyers, people. At one time, I saw people take their dogs out there and had their, let their dogs run around through the vernal ponds. I've seen other people that, you know, that were non-flyers, you know, going out and, you know, romping around in the vernal ponds. There's water in there. So, you know, there's other people use the parks that are, you know, not sensitive environment. So, you know, it's kind of unfair to pick on one group of individuals who enjoy a hobby and do everything they can to help this city and to maintain the environment. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Jay Humphrey again, Costa Mesa resident. First, I'd like to thank staff for actually recognizing the value of unique natural resources in Fairview Park and the value of this community. Through their exhaustive analysis, they've looked at a whole bunch of different things, and they came to a decision that made a recommendation for you to cease all flying activities in Fairview Park for a variety of reasons. I agree with all those reasons, wholeheartedly. I believe that you should, in fact, stop all flying activity in Fairview Park. It isn't just that these guys are nice guys. They fly and they do those things. The truth is, is they can't predict that one of their aircraft is not going to fall into a vernal pool, not going to fall on the bluff, not going to fall someplace else. But when it happens, there has to be retrieval and what have you, and there will be damage to those protected resources in Fairview Park. There just will be. And the only thing to remember is that once those resources are gone, which are unique to Fairview Park, remember, there's not, they're not all over the place. They're only in Fairview Park. When they're gone, they're gone. So I wholeheartedly support staff's recommendation to cease all flying operations in Fairview Park. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. Andy Campbell. I'm a 27-year resident at Costa Mesa in Mr. Harper's District, number one. I'm here to support the staff's position. I understand your feeling of getting a headache when you read the report. I'm a member of the steering committee. We looked at this issue for about two years. I've gotten over that headache, and I completely understand their position at this time. I was really proud. I was actually elated with the content. And I think the bigger picture is the land at Fairview Park has changed. In the 70s, it was, it was just a field. It became a dumping ground. Excuse me. You know, concrete was disposed of that. The flyers were there. Nobody had an issue with them, and nobody has an issue with the people or the hobby now. We think it's a valid hobby. There's something to learn from it. But the park has transitioned. You know, the vernal pools were restored. The city's looking at restoration activities in the park. There's grant money at stake. Senator Men just gave us millions of dollars. If there's a fly field activity that puts the natural resources at stake, I don't believe that grant money is going to be forthcoming. Maybe the existing money will, but I think future restorations will be at stake. There's a city ordinance that says flying an aircraft, a model aircraft, in any other city park is a public nuisance. So what we're looking at here today is really, do we want to permit this activity, which is considered a public nuisance anywhere else in the city, as okay in Fairview Park? There are other locations to fly model airplanes in Orange County. There's several within, you know, 20, 30-mile radius of Fairview Park. So as a steering committee member, as a chair of the city committee, we looked at this issue for a couple of years. We made a recommendation. The city council had other thoughts. The staff is making that same recommendation that the Fairview Park Steering Committee did. And we'd like you to consider that, you know, we've all looked at this together, and that's basically our recommendation. I'd love to have you support the staff, the District One residents that I've talked to, and the rest of the steering committee. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Josh Johnson. I've been a Costa Mesa resident for most of my life since 1977. Over the years, we've seen our city change in a lot of ways, some for the better and some for the worse. But I loved being raised here in Costa Mesa, and I've chosen to raise my own children here as well. I believe I am likely one of many whom the Harbor Soaring Society airfield made an important and lasting impression on at a young age. And I would very much like to have my own children and their local peers to have that same opportunity. Having witnessed human-controlled flight up close at Fairview Park as a child, I remember a radio-controlled aircraft being the only thing I wanted for Christmas in sixth grade. After learning about flight dynamics, I remember applying the same interest to hand-build from scratch a radio-controlled submarine in seventh grade. Beginning to understand the science of radio waves opened the door to radio communications, and eventually, I would use similar radio waves to talk to people all over the world as an amateur ham radio operator. The innate desire to fly stuck with me. And when I was 20, I began to pursue my private pilot license and skydiving certification later that same year. Now, I'm not saying that none of this would have happened had it not been for the HSS airfield as a child, but I can connect the dots all the way back. And I remember what it felt like on the airfield the first time I was there watching those aircraft. Not only is the airfield an asset to this community, but the Harbor Soaring Society itself is of tremendous value to Costa Mesa as a role model community organization. They've shown great interest and concern for environmental stewardship of the park. They have eagerly sought to cooperate and communicate with the city council on these issues all along the way. They've remained a profoundly popular and engaging presence at the OC Fair Imaginology. Have you seen their booth when the kids go to their booth at the Imaginology? They're exactly the kind of steam-based organization local parents like myself want to be available to our children and located in our very own backyard. If our community loses this airfield, how long then till we lose Harbor Soaring Society? Neither of these losses is a change that I'd like to see happen to Costa Mesa. Consider the flying field in the master plan process, not ad hoc. Evaluate alternate sites. And proceed with the city council's approved actions and immediately allow silent glider flying at Fairview Park. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Annie Young Love, 35-year resident at Costa Mesa, 32-year retired, just retired from Newport Mesa in the CTE Department and board member of Vitalink. I had this whole thing written up, but now listening to everything here, it's changed completely. Councilmember Gamaros, thank you very much for bringing up our CTE program. I'd like to make a quick little edit. Seventh and eighth grade gets flight and space, and that's where you saw the small airplane as a one-semester class. We have a full aeronautical program at Costa Mesa High School, and I wish you'd seen the flight simulators because the kids are on the flight simulators. We cannot build these big planes. Our children are learning about soaring and about remote control, but we have no place to do it. This issue that's come up right now, I can see both sides, the biological and the opportunity. But from my point as a career technical education professional, councilmember Arlis Reynolds and councilmember Andre Ammar were one young girls who's decided they wanted to be engineers. And one in aeronautical and the other mechanical and nuclear and crazy. The reality of this is, this opportunity gives children, like Josh just said, an exposure to technology, an exposure to an opportunity to enter a field where they can earn a handsome amount of money, whether they go councilmember Gamaros's side of the apprenticeship or whether they go to college. They can afford to live in this city if they move forward and learn about things like what Harbor Soaring Society offers. You have a small group of people, 100 people a year? Let's exaggerate and make it 200 people a year on all that property. I think you can sit down with Harbor Soaring Society, get the real information about the space in the area, and find a place that you can do this and give kids an opportunity. I want you to visualize the children seeing the planes and wondering how they operate, just like Josh did. I want you to, councilwomen, to think about, what was it that triggered you to want to do something like this? We're missing the focus. The focus should be the children. It should be the growth of this city. And those kids want to come and be in Costa Mesa. Newport Beach doesn't offer this. 25 to 30 miles, you're talking about getting one of our kids from Estancia High School to a field 25 to 30 miles away from here? When we're building CTE programs for them to go into engineering technology, to become medical manufacturers? You need to understand, this is the new generation. These children want to experiment and work with their hands, and we have an amazing nonprofit organization doing it for free. They're not charging a plug nickel to any kid that wants to learn this. They're in our classrooms. They're at the...
Good evening. My name is Bettina Eastman. I too hope that you will uphold the staff's recommendation to close the model aircraft flying field to protect sensitive, rare, and endangered species and habitats. Let's not forget that any flying, as staff mentioned, of aircraft over the vernal pools or within the complex threatens those species and potentially will have impacts to those species. I too have been moved by all of the comments this evening. But I grew up across the street at the Estancia Adobe Park, across the street from there. And I grew up as a child coming up to Fairview Park and finding trapdoor spiders, which we've already lost from the park, seeing burrowing owls that potentially in the wintertime are here now that might be impacted if planes were to fly this time of year. Of course, now that we're coming up to spring breeding, as Kelly mentioned, there will be impacts to breeding birds. All those species that he mentioned are protected. So there will be a tremendous amount of impact to plants, animals, and the vernal pools. There were children that I ran into at Fairview Park when I was doing bird surveys that said that their biology teachers were also bringing them to Fairview Park to study the sensitive plants and other wildlife at the park. So the scientific aspect is not lost if we uphold the recommendations from the staff to protect those species. There's lots of opportunities. I myself have led birding field trips for the city, for the citizens of Costa Mesa. And so I hope that you will take the staff's recommendations to close the fly field permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know, it's been, it's been a process. We first got to see the staff report on Friday. You know, we politely like to say that there's, you know, we feel there's some inaccuracies in there. The map, for example, is the map given to the FAA. The map from 2016 of the flight field zones is not reflected of what was shown, right? You're not, you're not flying over paths in the park. It's inferred, the staff report infers that it's a safety issue, right? As Director Minter and Mr. Dalton said, none of, neither of them have seen the airplanes fly, so they must have received this information somehow. So why could they have not cited it in the report? You know, we politely disagree with Scott Thomas's comments that, and his inference that the flying field supporters refuse to compromise on flight operations of silent gliders. We've tried to be very flexible. The staff report infers that the grading was done inappropriately. I think you can ask the city attorney who was involved at the time, when all this work was done around the 2005, 2008 time period, that we did it in collaboration with the city. It was ruled that CEQA did not apply. It shows photos from our newsletter. One of the persons in the photo is the park administrator at the time. A lot of staff's assertions are based on federal and state regulatory agencies. But we haven't seen anything from the federal agency, U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Where is that documented? We have a letter from 2014, and there is an email that gets cited time and time again from 2019, and it was sent just six months before the flying field was shut down. And it offers a significantly different view on how to, how to work together to come to a balanced solution.
You've got the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens, Mayor Protam Harland, and honorable city council members. My name is Adam Erith, and I am a long-term resident of District One in this great city. I'm hoping to provide you with a variety of additional ideas that you may not be considering this evening, perhaps giving you a high-flying overview of some things. No pun intended. Fairview Park, in my opinion, is not specifically a nature park. It is a mixed-use park designated for passive recreation. If you venture to read the current iteration of the Fairview Park master plan like I have, it is abundantly clear that the long-term vision of the park is not for the lowest possible impact, but to balance dynamic human interest in learning and experiencing the space. For example, page 24 mentions a boat pond on the east side of the park. Page 26 and 30 mention the development of a museum site with artifacts and information, or though struck through, a California Botanic Garden to exhibit native California species on a three-quarter acre lot. You will see in the orange, you'll see that the Orange County model engineers are enshrined as long-term use in the park, and ironically, that model airplanes such as gliders are as well. Per the latter, you can observe this in several sections of the master plan, such as pages four and 27. And on page 33, under the glider launch sites heading indicating that gliders and electric motors are quote, "planned to be retained and provided for in the park." It also mentions that the launch string is moving from the current site to the east side in order to remove the launch... side in order to remove the launch system from the vernal pools. I think with some time running out, I would like to mention that glider flying is an allowable use in Measure AA. So if there's any consideration about whether or not to move it to the east side, it could possibly trigger Measure AA as well, but I defer to City Attorney Barlow to weigh in on that. So in conclusion, I believe it may be in the city's best interest to have Council move this along in one of several directions: to, one, move the item to the Parks Commission for further study, as the original recommendation was promulgated from the Fairview Park Steering Committee with no oversight from the Parks Commission; two, to allow glider use in its current site outside of the bird migration period; or, three, approve an additional study to have HSS move to the east side of the park, provided any of the above actions do not preclude the secured and foreseeable grant funds for mitigation efforts. So with that said, thank you very much for your time and wish you a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Anybody on Zoom?
First speaker is Saman.
Saman, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Camille Saman, and I grew up in Costa Mesa area. I went to OCC, I went to UCI, and initially, when I went to OCC and UCI, I actually was studying just mechanical engineering. And one of my friends, who was a aircraft model airplane hobbyist, brought me to this field and introduced me into the hobby. And quickly, I picked it up, and I really enjoyed the environment. Everybody there was respectful, everybody there was caring, and they enjoyed what they were doing, they respected the plane, they respected the rules. And through that impact, or through the engagement with them, I ended up switching my major into aerospace engineering. And since then, I've graduated with a master's from UCI, and I've been working in an aerospace company for the past 10 years, designing drones that are basically the same thing as these aircraft that we're talking about, but for the military. So I'm actually moving back to the air right now. I got a job in the area in Irvine, and I was really hoping that at some point I would bring my daughter to enjoy the same experience that I got in this field and get her excited about learning and about engineering in general. And when I heard that this field was closed, it was really sad for me, because it was sad that others like me are not going to have that experience. So we all love the environment, we all want to see all of the environment being protected and preserved. I really urge you to try to find a solution that respects everybody's benefit. We definitely don't want to cause any harm, and I'm pretty sure there is some kind of middle ground that would help us preserve the wildlife, but at the same time, help educate our kids and mostly influence them, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Daniel Rosowski.
Mr. Rosowski, you have the floor.
Hello, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Dear City Council Members, my name is Daniel Rosowski, I'm aerospace engineer in the local community. I apologize for not being able to make it in person, but I do want to address the important issue regarding the use of Fairview Park. As you may be aware, model glider flying is recognized in public use objectives of the Fairview Park Master Plan. In fact, it is included in the third defined objective of the plan, which is to provide for the continuation of the organized uses that have historically occurred on the site, including model railroad roading, model airplane, and model glider flying. The Fairview Park Master Plan presents a park for passive uses, including walking, jogging, biking, and quiet contemplation. However, it also includes a model railroad, glider, and kite flying, and group picnicking, all offered without compromising the overall passive nature of the plan. This means that the use of model gliders in the park is in line with the park's overall objective and purpose. Furthermore, the flying of that glider airfield is specifically noted as an activity that is compatible with the natural habitat restoration and archaeological preservation to occur in the major portion of the site within the Fairview Park Master Plan on several occasions. The specific designation within the plan is significant and should be considered when any assessment is made regarding compatibility of gliders with passive use and restoration activity. In light of all this information, I strongly urge the City Council to support the continued use of model gliders in Fairview Park. Any decision to reconsider the compatibility of gliders with passive use and restoration activity should be made in conjunction with the Fairview Park Master Plan update as previously directed by the City Council vote on September 21st, 2021. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust the City Council will make a decision that is in the best interest of the citizens and the environment. Really appreciate your time.
Next speaker is Cassius Rutherford.
Commissioner Rutherford, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in tonight. I want us to recognize the deep appreciation for the natural habitat at Fairview that I believe is shared by all of us here, you know, definitely the Alliance and HSS, and also kudos to Jason and Kelly for their tireless work on this front. I want to first recognize their leadership and their team's hard work before I say anything else. We've heard this item before, but I wanted to add a few points as you consider, of course, action tonight. Notably, that the Harbor Soaring Society and Mr. Garcia have made what can only be described as a good faith effort to engage with the city. In my conversations with them over the past year, they showed a consistent willingness to work with city staff to modify their use in order to better protect the Hart Park's natural habitat. There were also more nuanced recommendations that flowed out of the stakeholder meetings that we attended, held by Director Minter and Cynthia D'Agosta over a year ago. I think all of those should be revisited, so this can move forward as the Council intended. HSS also showed a willingness to bring their activity into compliance at those meetings I attended. I think this is important development. I don't think the resulting recommendation to close the field completely aligns with this engagement that was had over the past few years since the council decision. I don't think it's fair to any user group that makes such a prolonged effort to collaborate with city or any agency to get that kind of result. I also want to highlight a few key points. The letters from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the endemic biologists, they only refer to quote-unquote "flying model aircraft" or quote-unquote "RC drones", but I do not see them specifically call out silent gliders. And gliders are materially different, much quieter than RC drones and RC aircraft, so this distinction makes sense. The study cited in these letters is a noise level above 60 decibels, recommended for nesting birds as a major impact, and gliders are typically much quieter than this. So I also think the studies mistakenly cite the wrong burrowing owl study. You received the 2006 burrowing owl study, and that is not the most recent study. The most recent study is the 2013 survey of burrowing owls, and it did not find them by the fly field. They were found on the east side of the park, which is not by the fly field. So in some, you know, I don't see new information from agencies expressing a specific opposition to silent gliders. I see, you know, some of the same information we've heard in the past about aircraft and drones and such, but I think there's an opportunity for the city to find a path forward for compliance with silent gliders. I think you've heard a great amount of community interest in finding a path forward to compliance tonight, and I think that would be a more prudent recommendation to explore versus immediately shutting down the field. So I wanted to express that willingness to work in support of a compromise, and I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Robertson.
Mr. Robertson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. Yes, my name is James Robertson. Thank you for letting me speak in support of silent glider flying at Fairview Park. I have flown radio-controlled model airplanes at the flying field, and I've gotten a lot of joy and satisfaction from that. I've also seen a lot of other people get enjoyment from both flying and watching other people fly there. I've been one of the, I work as an engineer in aerospace, and I've also mentored students at UCI in engineering who have been involved with model airplanes, both in their clubs at UCI, as well as at the flying field at Fairview Park. And, you know, we've heard tonight a lot about the STEM aspects of this. I wanted to reiterate that, and also reiterate that, you know, having a local resource for doing these activities is very important in that, you know, going, as someone else here has also said, you know, going 20, 30 miles away is a big hindrance to kids being able to participate in this, especially when they might not have easy access to transport. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is John.
John, you have the floor.
Hold on, hold on. Something's happening, so you're not audible. I mean, we, there's a lot of noise, but we can't understand you. Okay, let's start. John, are you still there? Still can't hear you.
Still can't understand you. What's going on? Can you...
Can you turn your volume down on your side?
Switch it up, maybe turn the volume down. Nope.
Can't do it, no.
I tell you what, why don't we go back, come back to you, John? Let's go to another speaker, because your voice is incomprehensible.
Next speaker is Wendy Leece.
Ms. Leece, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, and thank you, Kelly and Jason. What a robust discussion of Fairview Park, and so many different opinions. You know, it just magnifies the diversity in our city and how we like to work together to solve problems. As president of Fairview Park Alliance, we sent you a letter, and we do support the staff's research and their recommendation to, because of the environmental incompatibility with what looks like the plan or the map for the silent gliders as established, and how it would intrude into the habitat and the vernal pools. I think my main concern is with U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the state that we do as a city set the higher example that we are in compliance with the regulations. We don't want to put the city at risk for not acquiring future grants, and we were blessed with Senator Min's generous gift to us. We don't want to walk a line that really shows to our young people that we're not willing to follow the rules. And if we want, we don't like the rules, then we should change them. It is a protected area, and the species are protected, and so I'm glad I'm not up there tonight, and you are, but to take in all these opinions. So we are, we do live under the rule of law, and I think that you need to consider that and not find any wiggle room to bend the rules to make this happen for the silent, for the glider people. They're wonderful people, and it's a wonderful hobby, but we do need to follow the rules, the letter and the spirit of the law. Thank you for your attention.
Next speaker, Daniel Baum.
Mr. Baum, you have the floor. All right, good, we got you.
Fairview Park being home to the last coastal vernal pools habitat in Southern California, as well as home to burrowing owl, northern harrier, and many other potential and protected endangered birds and species, which are easily threatened away by model gliders. The potential for fines, like Mrs. Leece just said, and having fish and wildlife in multiple agencies being against model flight, these reasons alone, not to mention many other, are more than enough for me to fully support the staff's recommendation on the stoppage of gliders. I understand that some individuals' hobbies and potential educational value for the younger kids are at risk here, and in my opinion, if these hobbies and these educational tools are that important, you should have no problem driving the 15 minutes to the Bob Swedson Field, home of the Orange County Models Association. Thank you for your time.
All right, the next speaker is Jeff L., please.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Hi, I'm Jeff Little, a Costa Mesa resident, and if you'd like to know what I look like, since I can't be there tonight, just check out the main Yelp page picture for Imaginology. You will see me, a picture of me making gliders with children while I was volunteering with HSS, as I will again next month. Hope to see you there. And I'd like to read a letter written by John Anderson, longtime HSS member, as he could not be here tonight even. Please allow for the continuation of glider flying at Fairview Park. I'm an 86, soon-to-be 87-year-old lifelong model aircraft enthusiast, and I hope that I will still have the special opportunity to enjoy flight at Fairview, along with new generations of tomorrow's aerospace leaders. I understand the strong desire to preserve our natural resources. I also understand the need for balanced use. On one hand, I'm a retired city planner with several awards for environmental projects, including wetlands restoration, a former board member of Orange Coast River Park, and several local and regional open space trails committees, including Costa Mesa Stretch of Santa Ana River Trail. On the other hand, as former General Director of Harbor Soaring Society, I worked with your city engineering and recreation staff who prepared the initial study and negative declaration for the runway improvements. I also facilitated the highly successful working license between environmental preservationists and the Harbor Soaring Society to provide extremely valuable RC video documentation in the support of successful efforts to preserve wetlands, including Banning Ridge, Huntington Beach Wetlands, and in these instances, our model aircraft pilots are much appreciated in protecting local natural resources. Currently, I serve as a senior-rated aerospace education officer, a captain with the Civil Air Patrol, and the Air Force Auxiliary. As such, among other subjects, I teach design, build, fly, to hundreds of aspiring cadets locally at venues including Edwards Air Force Base in Vandenberg and in Costa Mesa, where it would be ideal to train our cadets and local youth in small numbers at Fairview Park to help our nation's urgent call for more aviation personnel. And as a side note, Jeff again speaking here, one extinct species that was not mentioned in the presentation was the children interested in science and technology. Costa Mesa parks are for people. Thank you.
Next speaker, Cynthia McDonald.
Good evening again. Years ago, when the Waldorf School moved to its current location, Rick and I walked into Fairview Park to check out the model planes. There was a gentleman there who told us all about how they worked, and it was fascinating. I was certain that my kids who attended Waldorf would love to be able to learn from this man. He had a large gasoline-powered plane, it must have had a wingspan of seven feet, that he used to tow the glider up, and while the glider was silent, the plane definitely wasn't. A few years back, I revisited the runway, and I was surprised at how large it had become and how it had been graded into what was obviously a vernal pool watershed. It is damaging to the habitat to walk in a vernal pool, to land or crash a plane into a vernal pool, or to allow a dog to run into a vernal pool, whether it's wet or dry, because any disturbance of the water and dirt can damage the fragile ecosystem that nurtures the fairy shrimp. I'm sure the grading did a lot of damage. I've got nothing against the members of the Harbor Soaring Society. They're great guys, they aren't capable of policing anyone other than their members, and we've got many more people who aren't members who are using Fairview Park with motorized planes, cars, and drones, and that's the problem. Those planes and drones come close to birds. I've seen it. They land in the vernal pools. I sent you a photo earlier today. They land in the vernal pools. I sent you a photo earlier today. And they destroy the ability of people like me to enjoy the park. Fairview Park was supposed to be a passive-use park. It has suffered for many years because it has not been managed properly and because members of the public aren't aware of or refuse to acknowledge that it is an environmentally environmentally sensitive habitat area. The city hasn't done any better job of policing because there aren't full-time park rangers stationed there to monitor the use of the park. The master plan is antiquated, and there is good reason for its revision. I hope some of the questions I heard tonight are rhetorical and that you've all visited Fairview Park and read the signage that educates the public. I get the feeling you haven't because you know the fencing around the vernal pools, it's just cable and post. Protections of the park have been an issue for many years. And it's time to do what is best for this escha and the many diverse inhabitants of the park. I ask that you respect the environmental sensitivity of Fairview Park and the desires of the state and federal regulatory agencies to protect it. If that means closing the runway, stopping all flying activity in the park and restoring the flying field to close to original state, then by all means do it. Perhaps the OC Fairgrounds would like to provide a flying field for the society so they can continue enjoying their hobby, but it is time for the city to focus on restoring and protecting the gem of Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Donald Wittenberg.
Mr. Wittenberg, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me, please? Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Oh, good. Um, uh, yes, my name is Don Wittenberg. I am a member of HSS. I had um model airplanes as a boy, and then I spent forty years as an aerospace mechanical engineer. Uh, Fairview Park has been a great place for people of all ages to learn about and enjoy the science of flight. For now, for years now, the issue of reopening Fairview Park has been thoroughly debated. Safety and environmental issues are most important. Regarding safety, in about fifty-five years of HSS flying at Fairview, there has never been an injury heard of by HSS resulting from the crash of a model airplane. I would bet that the same statement of a perfect record cannot be made for the other activities at the park. Regarding the environment, ground animals, birds, and vegetation have been flourishing before and after the shutdown. There doesn't seem to be any concrete scientific evidence of impact of wildlife due to flying gliders. As we've heard tonight, the issue was brought to the city council in twenty-one. All parties were heard. After careful consideration, the directive was made by the council to allow gliders at the traditional site. We we know there has to be compromise here. We've that allowing gliders only was a reasonable compromise between the parties involved. So it is now time to fulfill the council directive to allow flying gliders at the park. Thanks for your consideration. That's all.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin K.
Kevin K., you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens and council members. My name is Kevin Cook, a longtime Costa Mesa resident. I'm speaking tonight in support of the Harbor Soaring Society and the Model Airplane Gliders to fly again at Fairview Park. Parks are for people. We want access to our local city park. Flying model airplanes is a passive activity. I Googled today Fairview Park. What came up did not surprise me. Park in Costa Mesa. Two hundred and eight acres, scenic views and trails, hiking, good for kids, dogs allowed, and a public restroom. Not listed by Google, yet often occurred, concerts in the park, kite flying, bird watching, bike riding, and more. I believe silent glider model airplanes pose the least possible impact at Fairview Park compared to these other often occurred activities. It seems a big jump. All the endangered birds and plants problems arise from airplanes. To me, that seems absurd. Dog walkers, loose dogs, kids on bicycles, hikers do more harm, I believe, than airplanes in the sky, especially gliders with no motors on them. Also, domestic cats that hunt at night. Those may impact some birds as well. Do we really want to turn our city park into a nature preserve? If so, then let's remove all the people, all the dogs, all the hikers, all the kids, and we'll just keep it a nature preserve. I really miss watching model airplanes fly at Fairview Park. Parks are for people. Fairview Park is a city park. It's not a nature preserve. Thank you for accepting the input of us Costa Mesa residents. I stand in support of HSS, Harbor Soaring Society, and the model airplanes at Fairview Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Jim Erickson.
Mr. Erickson, you have the floor.
Thanks and good evening. Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the name's Jim Erickson, I don't know, about a forty-year resident. I've served previously on various committees and commissions within the city, namely the Parks Commission. And I stand before you virtually in support of HSS in the fly field tonight. HSS participates in parks cleanups, provides STEM education for our schools, and they even help or used to help curious children wandering by as they used to fly their planes. Uh, my children were tiny little things the last time the field was open, and we enjoyed visiting. It was great just to sit and watch the planes fly. I'm also really concerned uh about the future of the park um and the precedent that you might set for it if you revoke the fly field usage. On page nine of the staff report, you've been presented a biologist states the fly field area is quote highly disturbed by pedestrian and model airplane activity. It's in your staff report. And I and I just wonder um why we're choosing to prohibit or not prohibit or debate the prohibition of airplane activity at this time and not pedestrian activity. Is pedestrian activity next? There's a mountain of evidence suggesting that dogs present a threat to sensitive habitats, so much so the Orange County Park system, as well as the California State Park system, does not permit dogs in their parks. Costa Mesa seems to know otherwise, thus far at least. But perhaps staff is signaling the next revocation that are preused in the park could be pedestrian use. I wonder is bicycling next? And I wonder surely that silent gliders must have a less of an impact on sensitive habitats than large carbon-polluting trains that bring thousands of visitors to our park on a weekend basis and run on tracks cemented into the ground over burrowing owl habitat. Are the trains part of a long-term removal plan? We should hope not. The voters of Costa Mesa established glider flying as an approved passive use of Fairview Park when they voted Measure AA into effect. It was a passive use as stated on the first page of Measure AA. You, the council, voted to open the fly field to glider use in September of twenty twenty-one. Why, I must ask, has staff stood in the way of the will of the people and of the people we elected to represent us, which is you, the council? At the beginning of my little talk here, I mentioned my kids. Uh, it's been four years since they had a chance to witness and learn about the science and art of flight in the park. I know it's been four years because in twenty nineteen, I, along with others on the Parks Commission, voted to give staff one year to figure out what to do about gliders in the park. Our kids are old enough now that they like to try the hobby themselves, and I urge you, please, do not set a strange and dangerous precedent and do not continue to prohibit its activity that generations of Costa Mesa families have grown to love. Keep the fly field open. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Mike Costello.
Mr. Costello, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you for considering the the flying field. Um, a couple of issues to Mr. Gamaros's question of the vernal pools. No, you cannot dive into it. The vernal pools are ninety-nine percent of their life dry. Uh, no water involved at all. When we have rainfall, uh, the fairy shrimp wake up and they become food for foraging birds. But the rest of the time, it's dry. I don't, I can't cite a a date and time, but I know I have read a letter from the Department of Fish and Wildlife Services uh stating that model airplane activity is not, repeat, not detrimental to the vernal pools. Uh, there's another letter I've seen that uh Henry Smith quotes quite often, that when it's dry, you could drive a battle tank across it and not harm anything. So my question to you basically is, is there any documentation, any scientific studies, anything from anybody that says model airplanes hurt birds? That they hurt vernal pools? Because I've seen studies to the contrary. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Henry Smith, please.
Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
This is Henry Smith. Am I audible?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm a longtime former president of Harbor Soaring Society. And I was, I was there on the occasions when the field was graded. And I'd just like to assure the city council that when this was done, it was done with the cooperation and assistance of the city. So it was a team effort. Uh, and and no harm was intended. The the area that was graded was, at the time, before we started, it was all covered over with the construction rubble that had been dumped out there in the seventies. Uh, and I, so I think the the grading issue is a bit of a red herring. Uh, and I don't, I haven't seen any scientific data that said where we graded actually drained into that vernal pool. If you go out there and look when it's raining, it drains down Canyon Street and into the into the uh drainage channel in the south end of the park. But, you know, don't take my word for it. You have to go out there and look when it's actually raining, or you can't understand what's going on. Uh, the uh, the the other thing, I just had a question for somebody. I've been talking about these fairy shrimp all night. The the last time I went out there and checked, there's water in the pools. Have the shrimp hatched out? How are they doing? I'm curious. I I really like those little critters. I think they're they're kind of a interesting uh species and fairly amazing that they can survive in the dry all those years and then come back out when it rains, so. Somebody knows if there's any shrimp in there, I'd let me know. I'm curious. Yeah. Uh, I had uh the uh it's my, it's been my observation that pedestrians and bicycles are probably as disturbing to birds as as airplanes. And uh, and even powered airplanes, uh, electric-powered airplanes aren't that disturbing to birds, although we know, we're not asking for electric-powered airplanes, but uh, I've watched electric-powered airplanes in the vicinity of birds for years, and I never really seen a bird react to the presence of a little airplane. Of course, nobody from uh, I, we've never seen anybody from the city staff or the out there to see what's going on. They just read something that was sent by somebody else. And the somebody else probably has an axe to grind, just like all the members of Harbor Soaring Society. The uh, and in in that light, um it's my feeling that the good citizens of Costa Mesa voted in favor of Measure AA because they thought they were getting a park, not a preserve. And I have the feeling that when the voters of Costa Mesa discover what a preserve is, we might see a few new faces on the city council. The uh, the, I don't believe the people really want to preserve.
Excuse me. That was your three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And next speaker is Dennis, please.
Dennis, you have the floor.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, name's Dennis Tam, one of the aerospace students that James mentioned from UC Irvine. And when we were at the school, we were, one of the places that we flew was at Fairview Park. And I remember talking to the Harbor Soaring Society members, and one of the things they wanted, they made sure of, in fact, was that what we were flying was safe, that we wouldn't do any damage or and nobody would get hurt by the by our activities. I just want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, let's uh try John again.
John, you're on second call. We'll give it a try.
Okay.
John. John, John, stop. Whatever point you're trying to make, it's not coming through. John, um, I tell you what. If you could hurry, send us an email. Okay, is that it?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, we got somebody else.
Um, Matt S., please.
Matt S., you have the floor.
Hi, thanks uh for the opportunity to talk. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of opinions on this issue on both sides. I also have concerns with respect to Measure AA. As you know, it was passed in or supported overwhelmingly in November twenty sixteen. And that required, that amended the municipal code to require that certain changes to Fairview Park go to a vote of the people. Uh, I'm concerned that this change would would trigger that, so it was enacted to give the public the right to determine if a project beyond the as-built condition of Fairview Park should be allowed or not. The as-built condition means the amenities and alterations that have been built as of the effective date of the ordinance, which includes the fly field and related infrastructure. Measure AA protects against alteration that reduces the tangible and intangible benefits to the public. It's clear that closing the fly field is an alteration that reduces the benefits to the public and changes the as-built condition of the park. Any proposal that includes modifications to the use and or movement of the field will have consequences for Measure AA, potentially including the requirement of a full vote of the public to be implemented. I'd urge the council to take into account the will of the people that voted for Measure AA and respect their decision. The fly field's a cherished part of Fairview Park and has brought joy to many residents for decades, as you've heard here tonight. Any decision that affects this should not be taken lightly, lightly, as is the intent of Measure AA, and the public must have a say in its future. I'd also implore you to consider the alternative solutions that would have been proposed that would allow the fly field to remain open while addressing the concerns that have been raised as well. Uh, it is a park for the people, and there's there's room for all users of the park in a city like this. I encourage the council to respect the will of the people who voted for Measure AA and protect the tangible and intangible benefits that the fly field provides the public. Any decision that affects it should be made with the utmost consideration and transparency, and the public must have a say in its future. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, C K D.
C K D., you have the floor.
I'm sorry, am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. This is Cynthia Deagosta. And I've been debating on whether or not I was going to say anything this evening. Um, I am the previous Fairview Park administrator, and trust me, I spent four years on this issue. And with many of you that have sat on the dais, we've been through this conversation uh many times. Um, I think the only thing that I can add this evening perhaps is to um encourage council to um get behind your commitment that you have made to the environment and understand that this is a a debate not about uh specific uses, but about whether or not uses are compatible with the commitments that we have as a city made uh to restoration at Fairview Park. And the commitment started far back, as staff has quoted in the original uh master plan and the updates of the master plan, and I'm sure that we will see in the new update of the master plan. Um, and through Measure AA, the community wants this park preserved, not developed. And the actions that we've heard about this evening in terms of the development for the fly field were done as many other actions at Fairview Park were done to harm the environment um inadvertently by the city, and we are spending numerous dollars now correcting those mistakes, and this just happens to be another one of those mistakes that are incompatible. And this just happens to be another one of those mistakes that are incompatible with the environment that did exist there, which was the watershed for the vernal pools, which has been altered via the fly field installation where it is now. The commitments you have made, um, so far are probably totaling about three million dollars for, uh, environmental restoration at Fairview Park. Last week, we were talking about the men money. Uh, Senator Min has contributed, uh, roughly three to five more million towards, uh, restoration at Fairview Park. Um, it's not the thirty million that we spent on Lions Park, but we are invested in Fairview Park and in the commitment to restore it. Um, I would like to close, I think, by saying and recommending that, uh, I've heard Mayor Stevens say before that it's easy to understand when you, uh, need to get out of the way and let staff make decisions because they know what they're talking about. I'd like to say that the, uh, questions, the, the breadth of questions that came forward from council tonight for Mr. Dalton to answer should indicate to you the lack of understanding that the council currently has with regard to environmental issues and should listen to staff and should listen to the experts who have commented this evening. Lastly, we've heard a lot over the last four years about the need for STEM education. We're all in support of that. This is the Parks Department. We do like programs. We like providing them. Um, and we have offered times, uh, where HSF, uh, HSS could work with us.
Ms. DiGosta, your time's up.
Oh, well, much could be said for biology, the same as for aero engineering.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is, uh, Punit.
Punit, you have the floor.
Hi, um, my name is Punit. Um, I'm a local resident. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Yeah, yep. Um, yeah, so I, I had a couple of thoughts. Um, I moved here, uh, relatively recently in twenty twenty, just after COVID started. Um, and, uh, when I was looking for, uh, a place to stay, I did happen to, uh, come across the Harbor Soaring Society or, um, the, the, the flying field in, in Fairview Park. And I was, uh, very intrigued by it and it is something that I've always wanted to do growing up, to have a place where I can fly model airplanes or gliders. Um, and, uh, I learned about the history of why it was closed and I was looking forward to it being opened after, um, the decision in September of twenty twenty-one. Um, um, in the meantime, I've been a very frequent visitor to the park. Um, I've been participating with the Fairview Park Alliance. Um, I've been, uh, coming on, on every second Saturday of the month, uh, for the restoration projects and got a chance to meet some wonderful people, um, not just the HSS members, but also the staff, uh, uh, who's, who's speaking today and, and other members who are very in, engaged in, in the environmental custodianship of the park. Um, and, and based on my experience, um, and based on what I've been hearing at the city council meetings, it, it does feel, um, that, uh, we should be able to accommodate both the restoration effects. I, I am a very avid, uh, bird watcher. I, I really, uh, help, uh, think about a- and, uh, volunteer in many organizations, not just at Fairview Park, but also, um, in the San Joaquin Marsh area in Irvine, um, working with the Audubon Society there. And, uh, some of the, the recommendations from today's report don't seem to be, uh, have a lot of, you know, reasonable scientific merit to them, uh, flying gliders, which are very quiet, uh, airplanes, um, that don't, uh, affect anything on the ground, that are, that use the, the time, like, use only like, you know, a few, you know, tens or twenty times a year. If people are flying there, it's, it doesn't seem to have such a broad, a large environmental impact in any way on any of the species whom I love. And so to me, there seems to be a very large disconnect between what was presented today and, and, and it's been disappointing to see that, uh, an activity that actually brings us, uh, to love nature. Um, uh, one of my friends is a professor in, in UC Davis, who is actually researching bird flight, uh, coming from an aerospace engineering background. And for us to be, be able to preserve and let these birds fly and also be able to learn how to imitate them, that's a big part of, of, of the engineering part of it. It's also a part of biology.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
Next speaker is John Hill.
John Hill, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Are you the John that was having trouble before?
Yeah, my name's not John Hill.
It's good to hear from you.
Yeah, third time's the charm, I guess. My name's not John Hill, it's John Rittenhouse. I'm a long time resident, fifty-year resident of Costa Mesa and a, uh, member of the Harbor Soaring Society. And I've come to the realization, being that the tail end of this meeting is negative in two ways. I see your faces, you're all very tired, you probably don't want to hear from me. And, uh, pretty much everything that could be said has been said. So I'll be very quick. Um, you know, my, my concern is that, uh, there's a lack of compromise. The Harbor Soaring Society, for years now, I was past president of the club, has endeavored to compromise with the other side. And, uh, that has not been the case. It, uh, has not been successful. And it's unfortunate because in years past, when with a different, uh, city council, we were allied at one time and, uh, somehow that alliance has fallen. But, uh, a couple of other issues I wanted to, uh, mention real quick. There is an agenda, a preserve agenda that's, uh, been, uh, getting increasing, uh, maturity amongst the, um, Ferry Park Steering Committee. And I've attended their meetings, I've heard their discussions, and, and their intention is to make or preserve out of the Fairview Park and exclude almost every conceivable activity. I don't think that residents of Costa Mesa would benefit from that agenda. I know they wouldn't. I attended the nineteen ninety-eight, the two thousand eight master plan outreaches, and, uh, there was a lot of support back then for our model aircraft activities. Cynthia, who spoke a few minutes ago, uh, held an outreach a few years ago, uh, public outreach. And at that time, there was a lot of support for, uh, model airplane activities. And it just seems that the discussion of grant fundings and monetizing the park, um, is a discordant note. Uh, I think really it's not in the best interest of the Costa Mesa residents to make it an exclusionary park. And, um, we should realize that Orange County was built on aerospace and Orange Groves. The building that you're in right now used to be the Santa Ana Air Base. We're all passionate for our different things. We're perfectly passionate for this club that's been existence for sixty-five years, the oldest model glider club in the United States. And we'd like to see it continue and we're willing to compromise. We would like to continue our existence until a master plan is developed. You'll get the data between now and then, and, uh, you with the data and the public will have a chance to speak and make a decision on, uh, whether we continue to exist or not. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm glad you made it, John.
Hank Castanetti, please.
Mr. Castanetti, you have the floor. Hank?
Hear me?
Yeah, hi Hank.
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, uh, to go on record as supporting the comments of Cynthia DiGosta, the former, uh, Ferry Park Steering, uh, Ferry Park Administrator. And, sorry, I, I'm sick and I have a cold, but, um, you know, it's the, the fact that it's Ferry Park needs to be protected. So thank you very much.
All right, get better Hank.
Mr. Mayor, no further speakers.
Okay. Close to public comment. Before we get a motion, there was a couple of questions. Some of the other council members might want to ask questions. Couple of questions that I wanted to ask. So I remember, I, I, this is at least the third time that this issue has come up since I've been on council. And I remember the first time or two, I, I tried to, to kind of figure out whether there's any scientific data. Some of the other callers said that, that said that, that the, and now we're talking about the gliders. Before it was a larger group of flying, any scientific data that any of these, um, you know, endangered species or so forth had been harmed by, by gliders. Any, you know, not just like, we presume that it's true, but some empirical data. Do we have any such data?
We, we wouldn't have specific counts of species themselves being impacted. It's not something that we've been observed, but section nine of the Endangered Species Act also, uh, prohibits degradation of habitat of listed endangered species. And we have observed degradation in the vernal pools resulting from, uh, encroachment into them.
Okay. And then, um, the, thank you. But that encroachment may or may not be, uh, related to gliders, right? It could be like many people said, could be dogs, could be pedestrians, could be squirrels, could be rabbits, could be anything that, that encroaches, right?
Some of it, yes, uh, although the area immediately, um, I guess the, the graded area, that area isn't within the pool itself, but it is part of the, of the ecosystem that comprises the vernal pool habitat. Uh, so, uh, there, there could be an argument made that that activity itself resulted in degradation of the habitat.
I remember asking that question before and I was roundly criticized by some people. And they said, well, we never really know, we will never know whether there is a, uh, an impact to the fly, to the, to the, at that time, many different modes of flying, until we shut it down and we could do kind of some type of a controlled study. So that leads to my second question. So the, the, um, fly field has been shut down now for three or four years. Have we seen that the endangered species have, have thrived in, in, in any way? In other words, are we seeing more burrowing owls? Are we seeing more i- in some like, you know, empirical data that we can say, you know, yes, in the last four years, we've seen more, uh, you know, owls, more Bells Vario, more fairy shrimp, anything like that?
Numerically, not, not per se, tho- those studies are, uh, biological surveys are very, uh, costly and, and expensive, but there have been observations of burrowing owls in the immediate vicinity of the, the, uh, fly field area, the activity area this year over the last several months. And in most prior years, it was not observed in that area when flying was taking place.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Anybody, anybody have any other questions that occurred to them? No?
I do.
Yes?
Just occurred to me. I'll, I'll, I'll be very quick since this has been, uh, quite late. So, uh, in eighteen months ago, when we considered this, there was a compatibility study. Uh, has that been updated at all?
It has not been revisited. Uh, it, at the time, it was, uh, it was effectively considered completed at the time and then, uh, by August twenty twenty-one, and when it made the agenda in September twenty twenty-one.
Okay, cause we just, I just pulled up the document and it looked like it was just a draft that was part of our original one. But in the draft, it said that the recommendation, that the study would go to the Fairview Park Steering Committee for consideration and then to the PAX committee, um, commission. Has that happened? Do we, do we have a formal recommendation from either of those committee or commissions?
If I recall correctly, it was presented to the commission in, prior to the shutdown of pandemic in twenty twenty. And, and I don't know that it was ever presented to, to council, other than as an attachment to the twenty twenty-one report.
Okay, so, but thi- this analysis that staff has prepared has not been submitted to Fairview Park Steering Committee for consideration or PAX?
The discussion with the Fairview Park Steering Committee, uh, resumed or took place beginning in February of twenty twenty-two, um, after the city council direction in September. Uh, so at that time, we, we began, uh, considering mechanisms to open the field and while accounting for the specific, um, constraints and, and protection measures that were mentioned when the, the motion was made in, at that time.
Okay, but the, the committee hasn't taken, given council any kind of formal recommendation and neither has the PAX commission, correct?
The committee has, has, uh, found the action or the activity to be incompatible with, uh, the envi- the environmental constraints at Fairview Park. So it, it has taken, taken that, uh, recommendation, it, it, consistent with staff recommendation.
Okay. Um, on the regulatory side, have we been issued any kind of letter from Fish and Wildlife, Department of Fish and Wildlife, California or, or US Regional Water Quality Control Board, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, saying that we are, uh, like a notice of violation?
Not a notice of violation, although there have been specific, um, potential compliance issues mentioned, including degradation of the vernal pool habitat and intake of listed species.
Okay, but at this moment, we, the city is not on, on notice that we're in violation or we're not, we are not compliant with regulations. Is that correct?
Yes, not currently, while the activity is also on hiatus, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mayor Portem Harland, I do want to mention one. Uh, twenty nineteen, uh, correspondence, though, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page as I'm looking over all of these documents again. So in twenty nineteen, there was a communication from Fish and Wildlife that specifically mentioned section nine of the Endangered Species Act. Um, and talks about the federally listed species that could be, um, subject to what they would call a take and there being some implications there for the city. Um, that's the only communication that I, I think we've received. Is that safe to say, Kelly, is the twenty nineteen recommendation, which has a series of recommendations? But she opens the communication, uh, to the city regarding the issuing of the permits of the model planes within the park and it, um, that we would be responsible should a take of federally listed species occur in association with those activities and references section nine of the Endangered Species Act. But to my knowledge, that's the only communication, if you will.
Okay, and I, I'm assuming that communication was, was brought to the council's attention when we considered this in twenty twenty-one.
Jason, do you know the answer to that? I know we had a lot of information and we shared a lot of data, but I don't, I don't know specifically about this letter in particular.
Report off the top of my head.
Okay.
Is that in the record now? Is it, it, do we have, have we received it? Uh, that, but what, what, uh, the city manager just read from, is that something that's in our?
That was not included in the package.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Harper, did you have a?
Yeah, I just want to try and recall it. Council, one of the, one of, someone asked a question earlier. Yeah, we, we voted on something in twenty nineteen, gave direction to staff, and then we're, this came back. I'm, I'm trying to procedurally.
Twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, uh, twenty-one. Why is it coming back? That's what I don't quite understand. It was a good question you had before.
So the September twenty twenty-one item, during the discussion of the motion, um, the city council direction discussed the needs and resources for updating the applicable policies and ordinances, impacts to protected resources, mitigation measures to the protected areas, and assuring that, uh, environmental concerns were accounted for in the updated ordinance and policy documents that were to be brought back. And that's what we are, um, bringing back. After having evaluated all that information, we are presenting this information for, for consideration.
But you're also changing direction and, well, the direction was to allow gliders. Seems like a difference in that. You read something and, uh, Mayor Portem Harland read something else, three bullet points, which made sense to me, which was, uh, see if you can put it somewhere else. There was a second one and a third one was write the ordinance to, to allow gliders.
Councilmember, I'll explain, and there is some information that I think is more appropriate for a closed session, uh, but in conversations regarding some of the conservation easements that we have on, within the Fairview Park boundaries, we have multiple conservation easements, mitigation agreements, funds that we have received, there are specific requirements therein. In the context of those conversations, uh, with those regulatory agencies- In the context of those conversations with those regulatory agencies and the agencies that gave the grant funding, there have been more conversations than initially, when we brought this information to you for the first go around and the first vote, that was discussed, in addition to, I think, also identification of other species that have returned, just different data regarding just the ecosystems and things of that nature. So additional feedback information from Fish and Wildlife, some of it, most of it, I think, mostly as the conversations have evolved, as they've done site visits that have played into this as well. And so as staff was looking at implementation of the ordinance with the changes for the gliders and talking to the Fairview Park Steering Committee, they went to the committee four times, that was on its own track for potentially bringing to council. There was no consensus that could be achieved there, so that, that those conversations stopped. But still, in trying to pursue council's authority and the direction, and having the conversations with Fish and Wildlife about other sites within Fairview Park, but also this, this area for, as it relates to other agreements that have nothing to do with the fly field, but the search for additional acreage for mitigation purposes, this conversation came up yet again with Fish and Wildlife. And the potential take, and the potential fines, the potential non-compliance.
Any other?
But nothing, no notice of violation. And so we're bringing it back, full transparency, open conversation, disclosure of everything that's been communicated to us from all of the agencies that help regulate, but also the agencies that have given us funding regarding these conservation easements. There are many players that are interested in this park, in addition to our residents, in addition to everyone that's requesting permits from the outside. There's also Caltrans, I mean, I'm sorry, Army Corps of Engineers, Caltrans, OCTA. We have mitigation agreements where we've received millions of dollars for mitigation as well.
So you're saying that if we allow glider flight in Fairview Park, there is some potential litigation, or there is some potential violation of some agreement we have relative to grants, some grants for funding?
What we're saying is, well.
And if you say that, if you say that, I'm going to ask specifically, what are they?
Right, so we have, we have grant and mitigation agreement issues that we've discussed previously in closed session. I can't discuss that here on the floor. But what I can discuss on the floor related to the fly field is that in the context of the conversations, when we're talking to Fish and Wildlife, when they're coming on the site, we're having conserva- discussions about the mitigation agreements. This conversation about the vernal pools, the sensitivity of all the habitats, and the fly field has come up as well. And they have, again, in 2019, also in an email that was sent just a couple of days ago, which you all have put us on notice, that they consider that activity to be inconsistent. And that's the information that we have. We don't have a notice of violation, we don't have a monetary fine, but they are on record letting us know that they believe that activity is incompatible, specifically with the habitats that we've listed, and in specific sensitive areas.
Okay, thanks. So just to follow up on that.
So we, that's why we're bringing it back, just, just to make sure that there's a full understanding on that, since they are on record with their email, but also in conversations with staff as well.
The agreements that you're referring to, they've been in place for a lot, many years, right?
Many years.
Okay, so dur- during all the years that they were in place, up until the time the fly field was closed, did we ever receive any demand letters, lawsuits, notices of violations from any of those agencies when the fly field was open and notorious for all those years?
There's just, to my knowledge, and Kelly, correct me, because I know you've scoured all of the archives, to my knowledge, there's just the 2019. So before it was closed, there's this 2019 communication from Fish and Wildlife saying they believe the permit and the fly field is incompatible. But in the same notice, they do make some suggestions about scaling things back, making sure that there are sensitive uses that are highlighted in the permit and things of that nature as well. And so I think they're to work with us, but nothing official, no bad notice.
Then I want to, then I want to zero down, because I want to make sure we close this out. So the 2019 letter that you just referenced, is that a demand letter saying we're in breach of any agreement with any of the?
I, I would, from my review of it, I would characterize it as them working with us, knowing that we have received millions of dollars in mitigation funding for different things, knowing that we're still seeking grants, and that we do, for certain areas of the park, recognize that there is, there are protected species, there are endangered species, and are trying to protect those ecosystems, kind of trying to work with us to come up with a solution that makes sense. And they have recommendations around that as well. And so it's not, I would say it's more of a handshake and a conversation than it would be a, something extremely punitive, but there's, there's no guarantee of that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of council of staff or anything? Okay, so many, many, seems like an hour ago, Councilmember Reynolds, is that you? Are you, do you want to make a motion still? Is that, or is that from the last one?
Yeah, it wasn't an hour ago.
Well, whatever.
When the last speaker was speaking.
It was a long, seemed like a long time ago. Anyway, and then whatever your motion is, you've got a second.
So I move that we continue this item one month to the April 18th council meeting.
How do you second it if you don't know what the motion is?
Seconding it. Okay.
I'd like to second it.
Second it by Councilmember Mar.
I can't do it on my screen, but I'd like to second it.
Okay. I, I, I got you. Do you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah. First of all, I want to say thank you to staff for not only the detailed report, but all of the work that you've done to get to this point. And I, I want to thank all the commenters. I don't know if a city clerk has a count, but there were, there were many, many, very, very thoughtful comments. And I know this is an issue that people have been very passionate about for, for many years. So I want to thank people for giving those comments in a, in a very kind and professional way as well. The reason I'm, I'm proposing we continue one month, and that would mean we don't restart this discussion, there wouldn't be additional public comment, this would just be coming back to, you know, deliberate and make a, a final decision. I'm proposing we do that because I, I feel like, at least I've gotten new information. There's been comments about some potentially conflicting information. I think we just heard that there may be information that we should be discussing in closed session. Many people have been focused on this issue and really rolled their sleeves up for, for years, and it feels irresponsible to make an impactful decision on that without following up on some of that homework. I'm not ready to say 100% no flying at Fairview Park, but I'm also not ready to say yes, let's just start flying again, as we did before, recognizing the workload impacts that that would entail, and then considering all of the other impacts, potential consequences, and so on. So I also see this as, this decision as something temporary. We have the master plan update process, where I guess about a year from now, there would be sort of a more final recommendation as part of a more comprehensive master plan update. And I think making that final decision as part of a comprehensive update, a comprehensive restoration and recreation plan is, is a responsible thing to do. So I think the decision that we would make tonight, or, or hopefully on April 18th, is, is what do we do in the, in the time period until then? I do think that there are some, I want to explore some potential solutions, such as, I think someone mentioned this, such as sort of scheduled fly events with appropriate monitoring. I think there's some opportunities to do some, some flying that avoids the, the harmful impacts that, that staff described. You know, I appreciate the discussions about, you know, do we have data, do we don't have data on impacts? Those are difficult studies. I think just saying there's no data because there was no study doesn't mean the impacts aren't real. You know, I think it was a couple of years ago, there was a, a lot of news around a, was it a, a drone that had landed in a least turned nesting site at Bolsachica? And, and, you know, that's another protected species. One small drone landed in, you know, a, a large acreage, and the parents' birds never returned, right? That's a pretty significant impact from a plane landing in a, in a nesting site. So, you know, those impacts are real. I think, I think there's opportunities to mitigate those impacts in the short term. And I think moving this, giving some time for, for myself and council to follow up on some questions, explore some other opportunities, vet some of the, some, some potential ideas or solutions, is, is the responsible thing to do. And I think it doesn't compromise, I asked a lot about timing questions, it doesn't compromise the ability to potentially do some flying events once we get past this sort of rainy season and past the nesting season. So that's why I hope we, we're also in the eighth hour of this meeting, the end of a long day. That's why I hope we continue the, the discussion for one month.
So can I ask the city attorney a question, please? So is that what is being proposed? Is, are we able to do that? In, in other words, can we have an item on the agenda, not take public comment, and just go directly to the deliberation and not have a staff report, go directly to the deliberations in the vote? Or, or if it comes back on the 18th, will we be required to open it up to the public?
If there's new information made available to the entire council on this issue, then you would, you would have to open up to address that new information to the public. Otherwise, you could proceed.
Okay. And then, okay, okay. So.
Sorry, can you clarify? I mean, I think I just heard, if there's new information, which we're, we're going to ask questions, we're going to open it back up to the public.
Yeah, presumably there'll be a staff report or something in our packet, which would contain.
We just looked, I mean, Reynolds just said, I'm going to ask more questions.
Yeah.
I might too.
Asking questions isn't new information necessarily.
Well, what's she asking for? Is it not going to be new to her?
Well, we've never just, that's, so what, what was just being proposed is something we've never done, which is not call, not call for the public and not give an opportunity for the public to speak. So maybe I'd just like to request a friendly amendment, that if we are going to bring it back, we bring it back on the 18th with no, no restrictions. I mean, people can come and they could speak. I know it's been a long night, and I hope people aren't redundant, but I, I don't want to create a problem where, from a procedural standpoint, we, we get into trouble. So that's my request for a friendly.
Yeah, of course, the, the official legal definition of continuing. I'm not trying to close out public comment, I just wanted to have time to digest a lot of the information and, and continue. So if that means additional public comment.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I may, maybe I misunderstood what you said. Okay, good. You have a second? You wish to speak to the second?
I, I do. I, I agree with Councilmember Reynolds. I, I think, and we, we've got time, right? No matter what, we wouldn't be opening a fly field while it's still raining, and God knows when it might ever stop raining around here right now. You know, I think it's, to a huge extent, it's staff's job to keep us out of trouble. And the staff reporter's done a really good job of articulating, you know, what the, what the challenge is and where the risks are. And I think that's, that's really important information for us to know. And there's no but coming at the end of the sentence, right? Like, staff did, staff did a really good job with that. But I, there is a but, sorry. Shoot, I was going to try not to say it. And, and I find myself asking questions in my head while this is going about the winch operations, the size of gliders, how far I can walk in the graded area before I'm in a wetland, before a watershed, before I'm in a vernal pool, and what the compromise area is there. The master plan does call the use of gliders passive use over and over and over again. And the intent of my original motion 18 months ago was to strike that compromise, to go back to what the master plan calls for, and until another master plan supersedes the master plan, allow the passive uses to continue. That's generally still where my head's at, but I do feel compelled to make sure that I'm reading the 2019 letter and the 2023 letter from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And with that in mind, again, going back to like making sure staff is keeping us out of trouble. So I think we're most of the way there, which is why Councilmember Reynolds was trying to give us just a little bit more time to figure out more information, rather than like bring this back and make all of you go through this again. So I could probably make a motion right now, but I'll, I'll go with Councilmember Reynolds right now. Thank you.
Mayor, I did just have one item in the interest of transparency, is I will not be attendance, in attendance at the April 18th meeting. So if you prefer that I'm here for it, you may want to consider an earlier date in April or the first meeting in May, or proceed with the 18th.
What does the maker of the motion think about that?
I'm looking at the calendar.
So whenever it comes back?
I think the first meeting in April would be too soon.
Agree.
And so. Our attorney won't be here, the first meeting in May.
We try not to be absent at the same time, but that means it's consecutive sometimes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not here in May either. I'm on a trip.
That's okay.
No one cares, but I'm not here.
I think, given, I think I would be okay with April 18th still. Yeah, we can, we can make sure we, we go into the details before that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, thank you. I'm supportive of the motion. I mean, I think that we are, if, if, for my part, what I'd like to see in terms of additional information is, is any excerpts of the master plan that pertain to the fly field. I don't need necessarily the whole master plan, but anything that pertains to the fly field. And then I'd like any excerpts or, or contracts, the ones that the city manager referred to, anything that might cause some risk pertaining to if, if we kept the, or not kept, but if we restored the, the gliders, if there are specific contracts that have specific language that we would be in jeopardy, I'd like to see those contracts, and I'd like to see the language that's of concern highlighted or bracketed in some way, so I could evaluate that. Those are the two things. Other council members, yes?
I do, and I apologize, I know it's very late. So if we're going to bring this back, one of the, some of the things that I would like to see is if, if we're going to do this and we're going to move forward with it, I would like us to explore the option of running this thing the same way the Orange County Model Engineers run. You can't just go and pull up in a pickup truck and drop your little choo-choo train on their track and start running it around the park. Okay? You can't go get a permit to do it either. So if we're going to create an operating model for the model airplane people, the, the soaring society, I think that it should be governed and ran the exact same way we do the model engineers. You can't just go there unless you're a part of their society. They have, whatever they have, a committee, the whole thing, the way the whole thing operates, I think it should be governed that way. That way, you'll, you're not going to have an irresponsible person. Every single person that came up to speak on behalf of the, of the, the soaring society was a retired engineer, aerospace person, whatever it was. So I, I want to make sure that we, we keep that together in that the integrity of the intent of moving this forward remains almost mirrored, like the model engineers for the Orange County Model Engineers. So that's, that's what I'd like to add and, and, and say, if, if we do this, that's how we should do it. And that, that's all I have, thanks.
Does anybody else have anything? Councilmember Chavez, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think we need to have more information. I think, for me, I, I will admit, I, I find this item a bit premature. We're talking about, you know, updating the Fairview Master Plan, and I think while that may take And I think while that may take longer than we want and it may be longer than a month, it'd be wiser to wait until that's entirely done to see how compatible this can be with that vision. That being said, I understand that there's folks that want to have a decision because it's a very passionate thing for them on both sides. So I'm in favor of the motion, but I just want to echo the fact that I think we are being a bit premature in discussing this now because it may be obsolete in a year after we make the vote, but that's it.
Excuse me. Yes, Councilmember Harper?
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of HSS, I'll be honest with you. I, I think it, someone said it's a, it's a, it's not a nature preserve, it's a park, and I hope we can get there. To council members, Councilmember Gamaros's suggestion is maybe another alternative is to have, you know, find out when the, when the, when the bulk of the people that fly go there. And maybe we have special enforcement at that time at some level to, to make sure they're not the ones damaging the vernal pools. Because we don't know, we don't know, you know, we don't know who it is. So that's the other, kind of an alternative to what a council member, a bit similar in nature, trying to control it a little better and work with HSS and if you're actually going to do that, so. That's all, thank, I, I'd love to make a vote tonight, but I appreciate you wanting to defer and ask more questions. So thank you.
Sure. Okay. I think we're ready to call for the question.
Councilmember Harper? Yeah, there you go, thank you. Motion carries seven, zero.
All right, good. We're, unless anybody wants, anybody want to say anything else? We're adjourned.
Adjourned for Weefam? Weefam, do you want to adjourn for?